All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, June the 13th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Facebook Access page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're to start now with any public comments this evening from the Board.
Yeah, so last Sunday was the Lunenburg Police and Fire Memorial Service. Unfortunately, I could not attend. I was out in the woods doing Army stuff, but I did watch the recording, and it was a wonderful, wonderful service. Since I wasn't there in person, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank members of our Police and Fire Departments and their families for their service to our community. Pancake breakfast is tomorrow morning. I'll be there volunteering. I look forward to seeing everyone, and I encourage all those who are able to go to attend. Lastly, I'd like to reiterate something that I said two meetings ago, which is that I'm always available to residents who'd like to reach out or to meet to discuss their thoughts or ideas. Please never hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
You took my pancake breakfast thing. But you know what? At least it got announced, because sometimes I... That's eight to 10, correct?
Um, I believe so.
Yeah, okay. I got something in there. All right. So, just a quick update, as you know, I've been a fixture on the, at the Board of Assessors meetings today. It was announced that as of the end of last week, there were 300 completed, and they are aiming to have all of them done by the 15th. Doesn't, they might not make it, but they are pushing aggressively to have all of them addressed by the, through, by the 15th. Also, notices for all that had been completed as of the start of that meeting today, notices had been mailed. So they're in, not all applicants may have received them yet, but they have all been mailed. And then also, just as far as the memorial service is concerned, Renee and I were both there, and it was, you know, it was, it was good to be there and have our Board representation there. And I realize, obviously, other people had conflicts and couldn't be there, but it was good that we, that Renee and I were there, and it was, it was good.
Thank you. I don't have any Board comments, any comments today from the public, any public comments? Yes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pete Lincoln, Hemlock Drive. Last weekend, my wife and I came back from Hull, turned down Towson Harbor Road, and we cheered all the way to our house. With two beautiful yellow lines down the middle of the road, and driving around town, I see that the town has done a terrific job in marking all the roads that hadn't been marked before. They've made the town a better place to live and to be safe in, and I just want to express my personal appreciation to the DPW for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments this evening from the public? All right. Any announcements tonight?
Yes. The town beach opening dates are Saturday, June 17th, and Sunday, June 18th. The beach will be closed from June 19th until the 23rd for additional cleaning, and will reopen fully on Saturday, June 24th. The beach hours will be Saturdays and Sundays, 12 to 6:00 p.m., and Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Seasonal beach passes and swim lessons can be purchased through the lunenburgma.myrec.com site. Town Council will be conducting an open meeting law, public records, and conflict of interest training on June 22nd. There will be a training for staff during the day, and the one for the Board and Committee and Commission members will be that evening at 6:00 p.m. at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, otherwise known as Eagle House, whereas we're adjusting to the new name. And Public Access will be taping this, so anyone that is a Board or Committee member that cannot attend, that video will be circulated after, through the townwide email. The farmers market on the Ritter Lawn has begun, and that is on Sundays from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., and that goes until mid-October every Sunday. And the summer band concert series will begin every Monday evening at 7:00 p.m., starting on July 10th and ending on August 7th, which are, with a rainy of August 14th, in the event of any one of those being, having to be canceled due to rain. The location again will be at the TC Passio's Building Lawn.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the Town Manager related to those announcements?
Yes, I did have one. I do already have that Board training, the open meeting training in my calendar, but is, is, is there any kind of registration required, so they know what to expect for numbers, or can we just show them?
I sent out a invite today.
Okay.
Through Microsoft Outlook, so everyone should be getting that, and so you can respond that way.
Thank you.
Any other, thank you for those announcements. Any communications from other Boards, other than the ones that will be here tonight to interview with us? Any other communications from other Boards? All right. So tonight, on our, I do want to make kind of one comment on the announcement side. Our next meeting is posted as being at 6:30 p.m. However, this is annually, we meet with, toward the beginning of following elections, it's common for the, for the Board to meet with our Council, and so the Board will be meeting with Town Council next week from 6:30 to 7:00, and the meeting will occur at 7:00. However, all meetings that go into, you know, that start with an executive session are opened in open session. So if you see a posting for next week's Select Board meeting, and it says 6:30, again, it is because the Select Board will be in executive session for those first 30 minutes, and the meeting actually will begin at 7:00 p.m. And if we wrap up early with our legal counsel, which we never do, we will still wait until 7:00 p.m. All right, going into appointments tonight, I will be moving around some of these appointments. I'm gonna front load the Lunenburg Library. I understand that the Director needs to take a train to New York, so we're gonna be front loading Lunenburg Library. However, we're gonna start this evening with Helen, with Helen Balcom. If I can ask Helen to come forward, and while Helen's coming forward to give her name and address, I want to thank you for coming last week and staying with us so late into the evening, and I apologize that it went so late, and we're happy to have you here first thing at this meeting today. So thank you so much for being here.
Helen Balcom, Whiting Street.
Excellent.
I've applied for a position on the Council on Aging. I've worked at the Senior Center, volunteering for years, a lot of years. I volunteered with, to put on our annual tea, and I do the Veterans Breakfast once a month.
Excellent. All right, so do we have any questions for Helen today, related to her request to be appointed to the Council of Aging?
No questions, just a thank you for stepping up.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think I have that.
So I just, I might, I have to look up when the term expires for this. I just had it up here, so let me just go ahead and get to it. Looks like the expires in 2026. So are you comfortable serving until 2026?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Debbie Lincoln, 46, Hemlock Drive. I'm the Chairman on the Council on Aging, and I just want to give a ringing endorsement from the entire team. We all know Helen very well, and we're very excited to have her aboard, so I just want to support her application very strongly. She's been to the last two meetings. We're very excited about her.
Excellent. And I just want to confirm that the Council of Aging did vote unanimously to support Helen's appointment, correct?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, do we have any questions or comments for Helen?
Just thank you for volunteering.
Thank you, and I, you know, I, when I go down Whiting Street to go to my own house, and every time I make that corner, that's always my cue to turn the music down. So if you ever hear someone bumping some music, it's not me.
If you're Iron Maiden, it's me.
All right, is there a motion to appoint Helen to the Council of Aging for a term to expire June 30th, 2026?
I, I'm happy to make that motion, but I do have a question before making that motion. That term will begin July 1st?
Technically, yes. However, it's customary that if it's a vacancy, that, that she can get sworn in immediately and start serving.
Okay. All right. I move to appoint Helen Balcom to the Council on Aging, effective immediately, or when she gets sworn in, and for a term to end June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and additional discussion? All right, as many are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. So congratulations, Helen. So the next steps are gonna be to check in with the Town Clerk. She's gonna swear you in. Also, Elaine will provide you, if she hasn't already, with a copy of our appointment policy. I encourage you just to read that over. It has some really good guidance on how to be a successful member of any Board in town. And I'm sure that you're under good leadership with Deb and Pete. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, next tonight, we have an interview with Chris St. Germain for the Conservation Commission. So while you're coming forward, Chris, later in our agenda, this is an interview, later in our agenda, we will be going through all the different Boards that are up for appointment, and making all of our appointments at that time. So it will be later in the agenda. You don't have to wait around for it. If you were watching last meeting, the other, there's three applicants for this position, and one of them indicated that he was interested in an associate role.
Okay.
So that makes it pretty straightforward for you.
All right.
All right, so if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, and your interest here, that'd be great.
Yes, good evening. My name's Chris St. Germain. I live at 268 Flat Hill Road.
Okay, and why do you want to be on the Conservation Commission?
Well, my wife and I moved into town around 2012, and I, I'm a mountain biker by, that's my passion, and I got involved in learning the trails by joining the snowmobile club, and they had me exploring trails and mapping them for them, and so I started using the trails, and then I got to meet other people, and got to really appreciate all the natural resources. I've been on Lake Shirley and Hickory Hills Lake. Then I got involved in, in building bridges, helping, we had a nice project between the snowmobile club and the Conservation Committee with kiosks, and that was, that was rewarding. Where, where the, where the Conservation Committee supplied the materials, and we helped build them and install them. So anyways, I, I like to keep the trails open. I go out there with my chainsaw when I can, and clear falls and things like that, so I just really enjoy the natural resources, and I thought I'd take it to the next step, and get really involved, and see if we can, you know, protect things in town that are at risk, you know, like wetlands, things like that. So I just want to do even more than I'm doing now.
Excellent. So I'm gonna turn to the Board for some questions. I will comment that, just wants to remind the Board that Mr. St. Germain comes highly recommended by members of the Conservation Commission. We have received several letters of support and endorsement, namely by the Chair, Mr. Bob Pease, and also by Mary Wilson, who's in attendance with us this evening. So any questions or comments?
So, have you gone to, you've gone to recent Conservation Commission meetings?
I haven't in several weeks, no.
Okay, but you've been to some?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
I thought, okay. No, I don't have any other questions, just thank you for volunteering.
Sure.
I don't have any questions, but I've noticed how well-maintained our trails are, so it's greatly appreciated, the work that you do, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't have any specific questions either. I think it's great that you've already been involved, and, you know, I'm gonna also use this platform and this opportunity to just note exactly that. It's just great what's happening on the trails, and, and the kiosks and the markings and all. It's, it's just really, kudos to the, to the Conservation Commission, so.
Thank you.
So, the Conservation Commission is a regulatory, is a regulatory board that has, it's a very technical skill set and knowledge set. I've read all the recommendations that have come forward, but would you mind just speaking to some of your skills and experience that would, that kind of primes you for the technical aspects of the job?
Sure. I'm in IT as a, as a profession, so I'm a, I'm a business analyst, and my job is to explain very technical concepts to very untechnical people. So I think in, with the Conservation Committee, there are, like you said, a lot of technical topics, but they have to be brought to members of town, so everybody understands what the concepts are. I was, I was actually in a meeting a few weeks ago, and I, it was the first time I'd actually heard some of these terms, so I know there's gotta be some training involved, because, especially around the lakes. So I'm looking forward to getting trained on how to, how to hold these conversations and, and discuss this with, you know, homeowners, and, and help the town, you know, protect what needs protecting.
All right. In the, in the course of the performance of your duties, the Select Board tends to, you know, I wanna, I wanna make sure Mr. Pease doesn't, doesn't motion to me of making too many faces as I say this, but we tend to not get too engaged in, in terms of the actual decision-making process that the Board, the Conservation Commission undergoes. We, we do treat it very much so autonomously. However, certain things do come to us, anything that requires legal actions, that's usually where you'll see the Board's opinion as it relates to conservation, also during the appointment process.
Okay.
That this is, this is the one time that we tend to vocalize our opinions about the conservation, so I want to vocalize mine. What matters to me is having a customer-focused front, when it comes to how the Conservation Commission engages with the public. It's a, you know, in my view, the service, the, the need for the Conservation Commission is apparent. The need for the Wetland Protections Act is apparent. And so, you know, there's two parts to it, though. That one part is protecting the environment and ensuring that the environment's here for posterity, and the other part is also meeting residents where they are, and being clear and common with them, and explaining things that come before them. So it's important to me for members of the Conservation Commission to maintain, and I, and I do believe the Conservation Commission has been very successful, and, and being, especially as of late, more customer-focused. And I would just encourage that, you know, that that continues with, with your appointment. I think Mr. Pease has done a great job as Chairman over these last couple of years, and the Conservation Commission as a whole, with really bringing, and making, making the resource better known to people in town, and, and having it, you know, more publicized, and that goes through your efforts, the efforts of many others, and making sure that the paths are maintained and approachable. So I would encourage that type of focus, is maintaining that customer focus.
So my primary job is, I, I work with business stakeholders to get their requirements into IT systems. So my primary role is to, to make them happy, and I, I would like to do that here. I don't want it to turn into an us and them between the Conservation Committee and, and homeowners. It should be a, you know, it should be conversational. They should be conversations, not, you know, finger pointing and yelling. I, I think, I think what, how I work, how I work at work should be how I work at the, on the, on the Conservation Committee, the same way. Just helping people get through their issues, and help them explain why there might be a problem, and how we might resolve it, things like that.
So I know that the two good members of the Commission behind you are gonna be great resources. I would encourage you to lean into that during your time on the, on the Commission, and, and you won't be steered, you won't be steered wrong.
Thank you.
So with that, are there any remaining questions for the applicant?
I just have one. There are three candidates for two places, correct?
Correct.
So if in the event, you know, the other, the two slots went to two other candidates, would you be willing to serve in your, in a capacity as an associate?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Anything I can do to help.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, on our, thank you for all who've come forward for our interviews for us. I believe this can, wraps up our interviews for all appointments, which again will be happening shortly in the agenda following the next round of presentations. So the Select Board, as I noted last week, the town of Lunenburg was provided with ARPA funds through the, this, these are federal funds that are meant to assist in the coronavirus recovery efforts. However, specific allocations, there, this is legal framework, as well as summarize, a 62-page summary, if that's considered a summary. But in the summary, it's, it's really been stressed that the intent with the money is to allow governments to be able to continue with those traditional government-related functions, which usually adds up to the first $10 million that, that communities are awarded. In our case, since we were awarded less than $10 million, that becomes all the money is eligible for that. And then there's also a lot of focus in the funding for outward-facing organizations, community organizations, really any, anything that's investing in, in infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband. And so tonight, we do have interviews with the Lions Club Food Pantry, with the Lunenburg Lion, with the Lunenburg Public Library, and also with the Boys and Girls Club, all three of which are eligible for ARPA funding. So we're gonna start tonight with the Lunenburg Public Library. They did provide a presentation that should be in our Google Drive. I believe it's in our Google Drive, so I'll ask for the representation from the library to come forward, introduce yourselves, and then start with the presentation we have tonight. I'm assuming that Harry's gonna be the first speaker. Harry, good to see you.
Good evening. My name is Harry Kubetz. I am the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. I moved to Lunenburg almost 14 years ago, and almost immediately became a library patron, and then shortly thereafter, joined the Board of Trustees as a member, and I think I have been Chair for maybe the last four or five. And during that time, I think that we've seen challenges, particularly during COVID, with the library being relevant and operating in a way that served the community. Fortunately, we're through that at this point in time. We are now open on Fridays, which the library has not been open on Fridays for the entire time that I have lived here. I don't know the exact length of that time. And I believe that our community interest in the library and, and the programs that we conduct at the library are making the library an increasingly important part of the community, and I think a, a central organization to the community. We are extraordinarily fortunate to have an astonishingly great Director, Muir, who's going to present to you what the library would love to have funds to do. Muir is astonishingly good, gets amazing comments from our patrons. So with that, I'd like to introduce Muir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harry. Good evening. My name is Muir Hammond. I am the Director of the Lunenburg Public Library, and I'm grateful to come and talk to you about some of these projects. Obviously, it's, it's a, it's actually a large number of potential projects that, that we've, we've requested funding for, seven total. But I think that it's usually an easy conversation to have with someone about, when I talk to people about the library and, and the support it gives to the community, it's usually an easy argument to make, that a healthy library helps create a healthy community. So, you know, we've got a wide range of, of projects here, but I do want to start, yeah, do we have the, we, okay, it's, it's up, good. So if we can go to the second slide, I have the library mission. For those of you following at home, or who need a refresher, the mission of the library, Lunenburg Public Library welcomes all and serves the residents of the Lunenburg area as a hub for the community, enriching our lives through its collections, programs, services, facility, and people. We'll go to the next slide. As I, as I mentioned, we have seven requests, and I believe the total adds up to $760,000. Obviously, there's not a lot of funding left to go around, but I'll talk you through our ideas here. Next slide, please. The first proposal we have is an HVAC redesign and construction for the library. The library was finished in 2005, and over the years, there've been a number of issues related to heating and cooling. Lately, there's been a noticeable increase in the need for maintenance with the HVAC system, and there are a number of performance issues that I think a, a design phase could really help with. So this project would address that increasing, increasing inefficiency and maintenance costs, correct some performance issues, and would have two phases, a design and a construction phase. Next slide, please. This, of the seven proposals, is probably the highest priority from the point of view of the trustees, and, and from my point of view. Although this is a project that's on the capital plan, it's scheduled for 2030, which is at the tail end of, of, you know, the 15 to 25-year life expectancy of an HVAC system. You know, certainly over the last couple of years in particular, there have been periods of time, up to and over a week, where at least one of our, our units has been non-functional, including one week last month, where one of the roof units, control panel burnt out, and while waiting for the replacement part to arrive, our children's wing got quite warm. Typically, when that happens, the large children's wing, which is on the south side of the building, heats up to about 80 degrees, which probably compared to the primary school, not terrible, but from the library point of view, it is, it is uncomfortable. So this project, you know, targets increased efficiency, resilience, sustainability. It would allow us to target some of those sustainability priorities for the, for the trustees and for the town, and bring in a system that would efficiently heat and cool the library. Next slide, please. The second project is a teen room renovation. This addresses an increasing need for dedicated space to support the young adult demographic that's coming to the library. It would design and construct a renovation to expand the teen room by about 40% floor space. The project would include a construction of two, potentially include a construction of two additional staff offices, which helps with the number of staff people. We've added a few staff members over, over the last few years, and the workstations for them are in demand. Next slide, please. So especially since, you know, 2020, we've seen, as students return to school and return to the library after school, often more than two dozen teens in the, the library after 2:30, before they go home and their parents are at home. We also partner with the Boys and Girls Club to do a homework power hour, where they send a staff person down, and they have a dedicated, they use our community room to provide homework help, and those numbers are in addition to the 20 to 25, on average, teens that we see in the main part of the library. The teen room itself, which is the dedicated space, houses the collection of books and other circulating materials for, you know, who are, who would be, the things the teens are likely looking for, is only 450 square feet. And a lot of that space goes towards the collection itself, housing the collection. There's a staff workstation in there for our teen librarian. So spaces in demand. There are four computer stations in there for the, for the students as well. That's an inadequate space for probably even 12 teens. So the, the project would renovate that space, take the current Director's office, and potentially part of a storage closet that's right behind that, to expand by about 40% the teen room. I think, you know, the vision at this point, which is still preliminary, would then add two staff offices where our nonfiction collection is housed at the outside of the building, providing a space for the Director and one other staff person, or two other staff people, depending on scheduling. I think, you know, there, this would be a benefit to all library users. What typically happens when the teens are in there, they get a little rowdy, a little loud, even on their quieter days, and that tends to interfere with access to the collection. If they're spilling out over into the café, access to the restrooms, and the other spaces of the library, and it really interferes with, with all of the demographics trying to use the library. So giving a little more space to those, those, that crowd that we see would really help ease the people who are uncomfortable around a loud group of teenagers being able to use what they're probably expecting to be a relatively quiet space in the library. So, and, you know, potentially, there, there might be an increased opportunity to partner with the Boys and Girls Club with such a renovation. Next slide has a map of the building, just to kind of illustrate where we're talking about. If you're looking at that slide, the front entrance to the library is at the bottom of it, and right in the center is the main hall. I've highlighted areas slightly to the left. The big rectangle labeled A is the teen room. the teen room. The slightly smaller rectangle labeled B is the director's office. C is the storage closet right behind that. And then towards the top, there's a number one and two, two rectangles there. Those would be the potential offices, just to give you a little bit of a vision of how that might look. Next slide, please. The third project that we've proposed is a restoration and expansion of the Proctor Memorial Garden and other garden plots that we've begun to put in at the library. This project would address the utility and appeal of the library grounds, help restore a memorial garden that was, is very important to the community, expand some of the ecologically designed gardens that the library has already started to plant. And those things would create appealing, supportive, and nourishing outdoor spaces, directly, I think, impacting health of the community, individuals, giving a space to support mental health, relaxation, and enjoyment of outdoor spaces. It would also support what's become an important programming space for the library. We've used that patio space that's in the rear of the building nestled up against Memorial Drive for things like storytime, especially in the summer. Our summer reading programs often take place outside. And so part of the project would add some granite seating to that area to support other uses like concerts as well, which we've recently begun a, an at least year-long partnership with North End Subaru to sponsor a monthly concert series at the library that just started this past weekend, a very successful first concert on Saturday. So that seating would help with programs. A couple of things probably would need to happen for that. There's a water feature that's not been functional for several years, so replacing the water feature pump, reseating some patio stones, adding a shade canvas, a number of other things would go into that project. If we flip to the next screen, can talk about a couple of other pieces. On that next slide, we have a picture of the front of the library where we've just planted a pocket pollinator garden to help support pollinator species, create an immersive educational experience for all ages. You can see there's a walkway right down the middle. These are brand-new planted plants, so they're very young. What will happen is this will grow up into a multi-layered green space. There are already lots of colors with blooms that have popped out, but it's an excellent illustration of some of the potential future looks of the library grounds. As I mentioned, this addresses a need for healthful space to help connect to the outdoors, water sounds, local ecosystem, support some of the values and priorities of the community that have been expressed, especially recently, local species, education, health, and more. It's an important, an important part of that is the restoration of the memorial garden itself, which over the years since 2005 has, you know, fallen into a little bit of disrepair. The plantings, we've already been working with volunteers to prune up, get things a little healthier, but, you know, a number of things still need to happen there to help, as I mentioned, the water feature in particular, to get that back to where it should be. If we go to the next slide, talk a little bit about ecological gardens, and there are a couple of pictures here of the way that memorial garden looked in 2005, when, or slightly after 2005, right after the building was finished, and a couple of those visitors during the building phase of the building, of the library itself. So, you know, the restoration and expansion of these ecological gardens would further transform the entire library grounds into an educational, soothing, and healthful space that would benefit all visitors. The local ecosystem, I think, is a really important part of that. Demonstrate some of the ways that local homeowners and residents could also install plantings at their home to further that goal, and also position the library as a leader in demonstrating responsible outdoor design in the library field. Ideas like food forests, pollinators, native species, and local ecosystems are really important here. Next slide, please. A couple of other photos help illustrate the current state of the patio, certainly not dilapidated, but a little different from when it was brand-new in 2005. Next slide, This photo is where that granite seating would happen, right above the patio, giving us a little bit of kind of auditorium-stadium-style seating there. Next slide. Here's a map of the library grounds, same orientation as the earlier map. The yellow area marked number one at the top left is the memorial garden and patio area. This illustrates a couple of different phases that we might implement to expand those gardens. We've already planted the purple rectangle right at the front of the building, in the, kind of near the center of the screen, labeled two. The south lawn area to the left of that is another ready space that abuts the memorial garden and the children's garden at the front of the children's wing. And then there are three other areas to the north and west, excuse me, that could be further down the road and provide a number of other ecosystem types that we could demonstrate some of those ecosystem relationships within each of those areas. Next slide, please. The next project is an exterior maintenance project for the library's building envelope. The exterior has deteriorated over the last couple of years. It's in need of a paint job, which is not a major thing, but it does help protect the investment in the facility when you're taking care of that. One of the big issues that's happening here, if you can go to the next slide, there are these concrete panels that are a lot like hardy board that have gotten moist, some disintegration, and the paint is pulling off of that. So there are a number of those around the building that could definitely use some maintenance. This, as I mentioned, does protect the investment the town has made into the facility. Proper maintenance also ensures that there won't be any disruption of library services. There is a history of a frozen pipe way back soon after the building opened. Helping to protect against the elements can help prevent that, that type of thing that would interfere with access to the library services and collection. Next slide, please. The next project is an installation of a backup power generator. This would address needs for warming, cooling, and shelter, especially after weather emergencies, enabling the library to operate independently of the power grid. Pretty straightforward there. Next slide. It does help increase resilience in response to weather events. Over the last couple of years, there've been a number of times when the trustees have volunteered the library as a facility for warming and cooling for residents who have been put at risk. Both the trustees and I would love to expand that role for the library, increasing the community center kind of role for the facility, brings benefit to all, especially at-risk demographics who need a place to shelter when it's too hot, they don't have air conditioning at home, too cold, or power, it powers out, as we saw this past winter several times. Next slide, please. The next project is another smaller one, installation of solar shades in the main hall. If you've visited, especially at specific times of year, the beautiful, open, light-filled main hall can fall victim to a little bit of solar glare. So this would, this funding would help provide motorized solar shades up in the high windows in the main hall, of which there are 24 windows. At different times, they do, we do get glare in both directions, but in particular, the south-facing windows can be blinding if someone walks in through the sun there, certain times of year, spring and fall in particular. Next slide, please. So a similar project that we did a couple of years ago, actually, at a couple of different times, we installed 27 similar shades in the children's room between 2019 and 2022. That did have a significant impact on the cooling of that space, which is, you know, south-facing, so understandably, there's some solar gain that happens there. Obviously, clear benefit to visitors and a potential increase in efficiency in blocking some of the solar gain. So, next slide, please. The last project that I, we've proposed is purchasing an outreach vehicle for library outreach services. So one of the new library staff positions that we've added in the last, the last year to help open the library on Fridays focuses on outreach. So addressing underserved and non-library users in particular, outside of the library, marketing and delivering and engaging with those people over library services. And as of right now, library staff have to use their own vehicle to travel to any location off-site to deliver those services. So maybe farmer's market, local businesses where we can meet them, local apartment developments where we might provide a program off-site so that families who have a harder time traveling to the library could still engage with library services. There are a couple of different models that you could potentially follow for what you might think of as a bookmobile. One of the pictures that, or a couple, the two pictures that I do have for these slides are taken from the New York Public Library's bookmobile, which is actually a small delivery-type craftsman van, which would be similar to what Leamester Public Library has recently implemented. So we do have some local expertise that we could fall back on to implement this project. But as we move forward, and I think we all recognize, some people do have a question about why are libraries still relevant? And I, obviously, working in the library, always argue that they are very relevant. But as we continue to have that, being able to meet people outside of the library when they have that question, or they have the expectation that a library is only about books, outreach services becomes more and more and more important. And having a vehicle that might be dedicated to that is really the goal of this proposal here. So, next slide. It does support initiatives that are part of our strategic plan, which covers fiscal years '22 to '27. As I mentioned, it enables staff to more effectively deliver those outreach services. It does assist in engaging those underserved and non-library users populations. It would also include a cellular hotspot so that internet services could be delivered at that, those locations that that vehicle might visit. It might be a way to target neighborhoods that have a high incidence of no access to internet within town, or low implementation of broadband and internet service. Next slide, please. That's the last one. So I'd love, love to answer questions if you have them for me.
All right. Thank you, Muir, for that presentation.
You're very welcome.
So to the board for questions regarding the summary or regarding the requests.
Thank you very much for that presentation. You mentioned the HVAC project.
Yes.
Having two phases, right, the design and construction. Have you broken out that cost for the two?
Yes. On the, the way that it's broken out on the capital plan, I believe, is $50,000 for the design phase in 2030 and $150,000 for the construction phase. Obviously, we requested $300,000 for this project, in particular, to help support those efficiency and sustainability goals that we would really love to be able to target with whatever does get built in the library.
So 50 and 150, you said?
That's what's on the capital plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's been bumped up to 300 now?
Correct.
Okay.
That is based on an estimate from, I believe, two years ago, initially the capital plan.
Oh, the capital plan is two years old?
And so we did ask for more money than that.
Okay. With respect to the teen room, are you looking to do more than just increase space? Like, you mentioned there's four computers. Are you talking about bringing in any more, more computers or anything else into that room, or is it just for the construction to expand space?
So that project wouldn't include any purchase of new equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really focused on creating more space that is dedicated to teens having their own space. As we know, teens are a little bit louder. So when you're talking about designing libraries, one of the highest recommendations that you find is having a dedicated, separate teen space that can be closed off if you need to.
Soundproof.
We don't typically do that, but, you know, the noise of those particular patrons coming into the library does impact everything that's happening, as I try and concentrate in my office right next door, for instance.
And has the library, would this be the first time it's being painted since construction?
I don't think so. I think it's, I think it has been painted relatively recently, although I don't know exactly when. It was before my time as director, which is, I've been there for five years.
It's not even 20 years old. If this is the second?
Before Harry was trustee.
I, not in my time, I don't think it's been painted.
I think it might have been right, right before that, but I don't have the date of when it was last painted.
Twenty years. I don't know. I hope I don't paint my house twice in 20 years. Just, I don't know. Between that and, and I've, you know, I actually read before tonight that the pipes froze the first year the library opened, which, that, you know, and the issues you've had with the HVAC system, kind of just, I'm now questioning the whole initial design.
Yeah. As you said, that would be a high priority from our point of view, HVAC, and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And with respect to the power generator, backup power generator?
Yes.
How many times, outside of the ice storm, has the library lost power?
I don't, except for slight blips.
Yeah.
Since I've been there, I don't think there have been that many.
In how long? I'm sorry.
Five years. Five years.
Okay.
Certainly, every once in a while, we have a blip. But we did lose it. I know we lost it for, was it four days in January?
Two or three.
We also had, we also had, two years ago, broken pipe because of temperature.
Harry, would you mind just coming?
Sure. What I was saying is, I believe, we also had a power outage, I'm thinking two or three years ago, had no heat in the building. A pipe or two broke, which then caused damage to the facility and collection. So the generator would hopefully mitigate that situation.
Okay. And I saw that the numbers, the costs that were submitted initially for ARPA were significantly lower, and I saw that Chris Ruth reassessed. How old were those? Like, that was, some of them jumped a lot in Mr. Ruth's, you know, reassessment, like up to 50% increase.
I know that the garden one was a significant, I think it went from 10 to 25 between the two times we talked numbers. The generator was a big one.
Generator went up a lot.
Yeah, that, and that was, that was specifically based on Mr. Ruth's estimate that he has in hand, based on the Eagle House generator project. The other ones, I don't.
I mean, were they primarily driven by just increased inflation or actual changes? And maybe he said you needed a bigger generator or something about the HVAC, like recommendations about the design?
Yeah.
Both?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
Were they primarily driven, the increase in prices or costs, I should say, were they primarily driven by inflation or some redesign recommendations of what was going to be installed?
I'm not sure I can make a generalization across all of them.
Okay.
Certainly, talking about specifics in the design was an influence, for sure.
And then what, what sources of funding does a library have for, outside of capital requests?
We have our operating budget, appropriated funds. We have a revolving fund, typically driven by fines, which the last couple of years has been very small, $2,000 to $3,000 at most. We get some state aid funding directly for libraries. Recently, that's been between $15,000 and $20,000. We have gifts each year. That varies widely. $1,000 to $3,000 maybe is a good ballpark. This past year, currently, overlaps, the grant year overlaps our two fiscal years. We have a $13,000 LSTA grant fund that's funding STEM programming and resources. And then we have our Friends of the Library, which is a 501(c)(3), driven by their fundraisers and membership. They typically either pay on behalf of the library or give to the library five-digit figures most years. Obviously, the pandemic amounts were lower, but it has been up to about $50,000 from them at certain times.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for your questions.
Thank you. Sluggewoman Mkey.
Sorry.
I'll just offer something to clarify some of the questions that you asked. The overwhelming majority of the funding for the library, like police and fire, comes from the taxpayers in town. So they do, as Mira indicated, they do have some funds that come in from the state, but they're largely funded by us. And they don't really have another source of income other than, you know, gifts that may come their way.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the, on the building stuff, what, you know, what we've seen in the last couple of years through other committees in town has been an inflationary increase in construction cost, the floor of which was about 30% and the ceiling is about 45. And it's just been the last couple of years. So we've seen a huge increase.
Thank you, COVID.
Thanks for that clarification.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. I was just curious about your prioritization for these. Is the order that you presented them, order of your?
It's not really, certainly the HVAC, which came first, is, I would say, our highest priority. And Harry, feel free to step in here. So I think, please.
What I would like to say about the HVAC is, theoretically, that is something that is covered under DPW budget, but.
Facilities?
I'm sorry?
Facilities.
Sorry, facilities budget. So if we were to wait until 2030, then theoretically, we wouldn't be having this conversation. But it's very likely that the, the current HVAC system will not last that long. It's probably costing the town considerable amount of money on an ongoing basis because of all the repairs that it has. So this funding request is, I think, in lieu of having that become a higher priority to the facilities budget and have that happen sooner. If that were to happen, then the funds wouldn't be requested in this way. But it is sort of a major issue for, for the building at different times of the year.
And I think overall, as far as prioritization of these seven projects, HVAC would be number one. My second, if, let me do tiers, if you don't mind. My second tier would include the renovation, the memorial garden, and, and the building envelope, the painting and maintenance. Those are, you know, important projects. The garden in particular, we've really committed to doing those projects. We need to find a way to fund it. Another, you know, one thing I have been working on is volunteer labor and donations of certain things. You know, we've got some, some leads there. We've got great volunteers at the library who have already done a lot of work planting, as you can see from some of the pictures. But that, you know, restoring that memorial garden in particular, I think, provides a lot of benefit. Library operations, just giving us people a space to come to, to hear water nearby and enjoy their birds out there, their little chupmunks, all sorts of nice things that are happening there. The kids love to play on those, the stone seating that is arranged there currently. And then the lower tier, you know, would be the rest of the projects, the other three, I believe, the outreach vehicle, the solar shades, and the generator. And I would put the generator at the very bottom.
Okay.
But I, you know, I think there's benefit to all of them. Thank you. Yes. You're welcome.
Just one last comment, if I can. Mira talked about sort of the challenges of a group of teens being in the library. From the trustees' perspective, this is exactly what we want.
It's a good problem, problem, yeah, for sure.
It's a great, it's a great problem because we know that teens wouldn't come into an environment that they're not comfortable in and feel that it's a great place. And I, and with our adjacent seat at the school, it's just a natural place for them to come. I would hope, as a trustee, that if we had the space, that we would then also have volunteer mentors and people who can help the teens that need some extra guidance in their homework, whatever it may be. So I, I think the teen problem is exactly the problem that we want. And in fact, the amount of people participating in our programs now is increasing quite dramatically, which I think is also a really great problem and a reflection on your and sort of the inviting environment that is created in the library.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Yeah, Mr. Nizolo addressed one of my questions, certainly a big one, was that, is the prioritization?
Prioritization, absolutely.
Clearly, because, I mean, $760,000 is a huge ask. And it just keeps reinforcing the idea. Every time the ARPA Fund presentations come up, we got $20 million of great ideas and needs and a $1.2 million bag to fit them all in. So.
Don't envy you that.
What's that?
I don't envy you that.
So I assume, and this is more a question for just in general, out in the air, really for the select board, I mean, I assume that we can sort of earmark the, any kind of funding specifically, saying we're giving X dollars for this project, Y dollars for that project, et cetera, right?
Yes.
So, but I also don't want to sort of like fractionally fund something that, in a way that makes it meaning, makes the funding meaningless, like, you know, that you can get, you know, you can't get three quarters of the way there on an HVAC system or something like that. So, I mean, it might have to, this is just the problem, right? I mean, I, but I can say, I think, you know, I mean, I think you probably realize that $760,000 can't happen. So it has, it's, it's, it's a question of tight prioritization, and I do appreciate what you laid out here. Do you think in any way, I mean, the, and I love the library space, I really do, and I've been there to many talks, and I've, I've given two talks there. I gave one on patent law, and you know the one that I gave when you were there was with Bill Tyler on the clock in Town Hall.
Fantastic.
So, and it's just a great space to go work in when I need to escape and.
Yep, I agree.
And, and, you know, to take books out, too. It's good for that, too.
Once in a while.
But the, do you think in any realistic or impactful way, the solar shades would, you say these other rooms get hot, will, will help the current HVAC system meet the demand?
I think it would have a positive impact on efficiency. I don't think it's making any significant impact on the life expectancy that we should see, be, you know, be thinking about for the system itself. You know, it's not my expertise, but we're talking, you know, fraction, you know, fractions of.
Except for the fact that in theory, if you had enough of an impact, you wouldn't be overworking the system as badly. It might last longer, but who knows? How do you do that calculation?
I mean, so at this point, you, very recently, we've put all of the windows in the children's wing, which is, which is the part of the building that gets the most solar gain, as, you know, so the, those shades have the biggest potential impact of any of the windows. Everything else is less direct and less space area of entry. And so all of those windows already have the solar shades on the children's wing. So the side of the building that faces Memorial Drive, that's also the wing that still tends to be three to four degrees hotter than the rest of the building in the afternoons, when you, when you know that's the effect of, of the solar gain. And so you've got basically three zones in the library, each of the three eaves, and each kind of has a roof unit that's basically heating and cooling or has the, the weight of heating and cooling, that one part of the building is most connected to those units. The whole system is designed to work together, but what we see is that children's wing is, has the most fluctuation, in particular, from sun and heating. And so cooling becomes the hardest part there. It has not, there hasn't been a correlation, as far as I can tell, between which units have failing parts and that arrangement and that, that effect. But, you know, each of those units has, has failed at some point for different, different reasons. And it was the children's wing last month that was out for at least a week, and we saw, you know, 80-degree temperatures. It did happen to also be the hottest, that hottest week in, in May, but there was a little overlap into that week where it cooled off. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your questions.
Yeah, I think I covered it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation tonight. Pretty of good idea, plenty of great ideas. You know, my, my natural inclination here is, I think that, I think the HVAC project probably needs to go through Green Communities Task Force before we allocate any funding for it, that there may be other monies available that will help reduce this cost. It's also knowing that we have 1.1 million, that would roughly eat up about a third, and we have a lot of requests. So I don't, I don't, I'm not, certainly, I think you've made a really good case tonight for why the HVAC product needs to be prioritized on the capital plan.
Yeah.
You know, I think that really the areas I like to focus on are the team room. You know, I think, I think I may have heard you say that the Proctor Memorial Garden is going to be renamed the Proctor Venezia, Venezia Memorial Garden, for all the work that I know that's being done there. But I think you've really presented a lot of great ideas here. I think that, that, you know, my notes that really stood out to me were the building envelope project, the solar shades. I really liked the teen room renovation and the outreach vehicle idea. So I know that, you know, for next steps for the board, what we're going to do is, you know, we initially were planning, as I'm sure you're aware, on having a criteria for how we were going to disperse these funds. And in the fall, there were different areas where we were holding together a three to two majority on some aspects and four to one on others, and then we had a change of membership, and then that completely threw off our, then we were down to two to two on some of them. So, you know, where we've landed is, is we're kind of approaching this more like a legislature would, and kind of just, you know, really rough justicing, justicing it and figuring out where to allocate the funds. I think that we initially started, like I said, with a, with a different process that we wanted to implement, but we don't have an agreement on it. And so at this stage of the game, I think it just makes sense to move forward. I really appreciate the, I want to, you know, the library is very relevant in people's lives. And I know that, you know, in this world of government service, most of us just hear complaints. But I want to offer you and Harry some positive comments. I think the two of you have been transformative leaders. You're exactly what the library needs. And, you know, the outreach that you guys have shown over these last several years, you know, it's really demonstrated, and, and just how the library is a part of everyone's life. You know, it really is, you know, multi-generational, the, the multi-generational aspect of our town, in which you're hitting, you know, everyone. You're having these partnerships with the schools, and you're working with the Boys and Girls Club, you're certainly working with other towns, communities, outside organizations, all different aspects of the town, police, fire. So you're really kind of like a glue for a community, and that's really what the library needs to be and should be. So I first want to thank you for the work that you guys have done as leaders, and we'll commit that, we will. I certainly am going to advocate for some of the money that you've asked for, not 765,000 of it, but certainly some of the money. And I want to, again, thank you for, for being engaging, for being passionate, for being apolitical, and for just being the resource that our community needs. So thank you both.
Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you.
The, next, we're going to go to the Turkey Hills Lions Club Food Pantry. And so while I always say Corinne or Corrine, while Corrine comes forward, I will say that this need not be too lengthy of a presentation. I think we all understand the need. So if you can just kind of walk us through in summary what your request is here today.
Yep. Corrine Scout in 116 Island Road. At least I said the right address. I keep forgetting, I moved. And I am the president of the Lunenburg Turkey Hill Family Lions Club, as well as the Lunenburg Community Food Pantry. I found out about this meeting late due to an error in email, so I don't have a presentation prepared, but I had sent one back in October of just some brief items that we were looking for. If you don't know, I'll just recap. The Lions Club is the sponsor of the Lunenburg Food Pantry, which in September, October timeframe of last year became a 501(c)(3). The Lions Club is not a 501(c)(3). So funding and support for the pantry came solely from donations from the community, donations from local businesses, and still pretty much remains the same to this point. With the 501(c)(3) designation, we have been able to start to reach out to corporate organizations trying to get donations of that respect. We've formed partnerships with United Way, the Community Foundation of North Central Mass. We've been able to get some supplies from, I'm trying to think, it's a health product organization out of Needham, I can't think of the name right now. But we are reaching out and trying to take advantage of the organizations out there that do work with 501(c)(3)'s and specifically food pantries. However, some of the things that we do lack funding for are equipment, refrigerators, freezers. We were lucky enough to benefit from donations of the equipment that we currently have. Two of our refrigerators came from a restaurant that closed here in town. Our commercial refrigerator and freezer came by way of Mr. McDonald, who was working on a job at a Starbucks and so forth, and, and they were getting rid of it. They were going to throw it out, so we took it in. The problem we're having right now is the coolant system in our refrigerator is going, so it freezes the food instead of keeps it cold. Our freezer, the compressor is starting to go, so a lot of times it's defrosting, you know, and not always keeping things as cold as it needs to be, or it's freezing too much. So we are starting to look at trying to replace that equipment. Not to mention, we need more storage, more food storage, because we are able to now go to the Worcester County Food Bank for food pickups, and we're able to bring in a lot more of the frozen-type meats and frozen vegetables and fruits, which is unbelievably awesome for our families that come in, because there's much healthier choices and options for them. But when we do that, we bring that in once a week in bulk. We also accept donations from Hannaford. We're having a hard time keeping them both in stock. You know, we don't have place to keep all that frozen food. So it's a struggle. So yes, we are looking for fridges and freezers, both the storage kind that we can keep in the inner pantry and then the display kind, so that when our folks come in, they can clearly see the food without having to open and close the doors regularly, because of course, in a food service institution, we have to keep our temperatures at a certain level and so forth. So we would like that display-type model, which we don't really have right now. In addition to that, we're looking for additional shelving units, which are fairly inexpensive, but when you have to buy 10 or 20 of them, it adds up. And we'd like to, we've spoken to the town manager about possibly expanding our space a bit out into the cafeteria area, rather than just the kitchen, just because we have a great deal of stock that we want to display and make available to our customers. And it'd be a more comfortable situation for them to come in, kind of create it like a grocery store that they can walk through, have some space, not feel like they're on top of each other when the customers are in there. So all in all, I just did some quick math based upon what we had shown you before in the fall, and the number to me came up to, I believe, like $15,000 to $20,000 total if we were to try to spend, you know, the money on capital equipment improvements. So that's it. What questions do you have for me?
The first question, and I typically go the other way, but just, just for clarity, the pricing that you've given, is this new or is this purchasing from like a secondhand food surplus store?
This is from Restaurant Supply, and it is new.
Okay.
Yeah. And these, we went lower-end models on this. So, you know, if we were able to find something a little bit better quality, higher price, you know, we'd, we'd weigh that out. But, you know, it's definitely new.
Okay. And I'll go down, any questions from the board?
No, no questions, just comment. I thank you for running the food pantry. It runs so smooth, and I've seen the people come in. It's, I think, very valuable to the community and the donations of food. There's, I totally understand the tight space.
We're very grateful for those donations, don't get me wrong. We, like, when we had the postal food drive not too long ago, I, the cafeteria was half full, and, you know, we were like, where are we going to put it all? And we're like, this is a great problem to have, you know, because we, we can't thank people enough for, for giving what they do.
Hi, Corinne. So this is a pretty small request, but I think it'll really go a long way in serving our residents, some of whom are residents in the most need in town. So I volunteer with the food pantry, so I've seen the work that you do firsthand. I know how important it is. I truly believe that you don't get enough credit for the work that you do in the food pantry and in other areas, so I'm just going to take this opportunity to thank you. so I'm just going to take this opportunity to thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I want to thank you as well for the work that you do. And you've, your request is pretty straightforward, and the lower the amount, the fewer questions I have, and I think they've been addressed, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, as always. I think that it's, you know, clearly the work that you're doing over there is, is, you know, it's, it's, it's God's work in many ways, and I think you know that, so.
Well, and I just want to say, unfortunately, our pantry director, Nancy Beach, is on vacation this week. Otherwise, she would have been here to really speak to this. She has, you know, taken over the budget, and, you know, she's really building it as a business, even though she's a retired 70-year-old woman. She probably is mad at me for saying that. But I would not think she was the age she is, honestly. And when she told me she was, I was like, how is that possible? I figured she retired early, whatever, and she didn't. But now she's like, I don't know if I'm really retired, because it's almost a full-time job, you know, what we're trying to do down there. But it's a labor of love. We do love it. We love the people. We love knowing we help. We love the other people we get to meet and the relationships we make. It's really an amazing opportunity, and, you know, I think anybody who's involved in a service here in town experiences the same type of thing. We have a great community, and it's great that we can all help each other.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and just, you know, the, the food pantry certainly is servicing all aspects of the community. You know, it has that broad appeal, which is what we're looking for with these ARPA funds. You know, I think this board would be hard-pressed to say no to your request, Corinne.
Not too much pressure.
That's, that's my soft pressure on my peers. All right, and to last tonight, we have a request from the Boys and Girls Club. And so Michelle, if you want to come forward with your request, and I want to thank you for submitting this. It's very important that we provide continual service to support the youth and families of our community.
Hi. I have no idea what you would like me to do, because I've never had to do this.
So what you're going to start with is, first, you're going to say your name and your address, and then you're just going to briefly explain the nature of the request that you're making and how it's going to benefit families.
Okay, so I'm Michelle Beliza, 126 Sunny Hill Road, and I'm the director at the Boys and Girls Club in Lunenburg, and it will be 17 years this August that I've been there. I believe it'll be 18 years that the club has been open, so that's phenomenal. And we're really excited to have an opportunity to ask for some support. We've been focused really hard on serving all of our kids, 6th grade and up. And once COVID happened, we had to figure out how to serve them virtually. We had to figure out how to ask people for money for a program that was closed, so that was a challenge, as I think I referenced in my, my request to you. I am like a person with a heart, so asking for money for something that's closed was virtually impossible. I just couldn't bring myself to do it. And after a few months of that, I said, if we don't ask for money, we'll never reopen. For 15 years, we've lived on a very shoestring budget, and we will continue to do that, because that's what's, you know, fiscally responsible. But when the opportunity to apply for some support came up, I sort of jumped at the chance, because we very, very rarely ask for things like this. We do a lot of fundraising, as you know. The game show is, you know, super fun and exciting. We have a wonderful end-of-the-year campaign that we send to our donors. We do our annual haunted house. We have small tolls, which is why I'm usually here. And all of those events are wonderful for many reasons. They bring awareness to the club, they bring new donors to the club, and they bring important funding to the club. But they don't bring in enough. That's the truth. So families do pay membership fees for their kids to come to the club, and it's very nominal, and there are a lot of people who tell me I need to raise the fees. Right now, it's $250 for the school year and $250 a week for a summer program, for a week in the summer program. And that is cost prohibitive for a lot of our families, and at this age, they could go home. And I don't ever want a family to say, nope, I'm not buying you a membership to the Boys and Girls Club. I'm sending you home, because the benefit they get is far greater than the $250 membership fee, right? And so as we've kind of come out of this pandemic, we've really started to look at, number one, how are we bringing in funding? Number two, are we bringing in enough? And number three, are we doing the right things with that money? And as we wrap up this school year, we're working really hard on some initiatives for the upcoming school year that revolve around youth mental health. Obviously, the Surgeon General has mentioned it's a, it's a pretty big crisis. Any kid across the street can tell you that they're really struggling. And the club is a safe space for them to come, be themselves, explore those challenges. They have supportive staff. Most of my staff are former club kids. I would literally say like nine out of 10 of them are former club kids. They've been with me since 6th grade. We've put a lot of effort this year into trauma-informed training, trauma-informed care, trauma-informed responses. And going forward, we really want to kind of make that sort of the underlying theme of what we do, right? Like that's, you know, I've always said, it's great if they can build a rocket, but if they can't talk to the person next to them, that rocket's not going to go anywhere. So they have to feel good about themselves. They have to be a successful human being before they can build that rocket, and that's what we're all about. So when the opportunity came up to ask for this money, my first thought was, I need to pay my people, right? There's no club without those people that do this work, that help them with their homework, that mentor them, that run Smart Girls and Bro Code and all these great programs that we have. The people that run them are what make it successful. And so, our little presentation, which I've... Can you tell this is not my thing? Okay, so I may, I sent you your proposal, but then we created a little slideshow for you. I don't know what you would like to do with that.
I didn't receive it.
Okay, okay, so don't worry about it then. All right, we're moving on.
We did get the, um... Was this one of your presentations? We did get the summarized form and then the budget.
Yeah, that's okay. That's all right. So what can I, what else can I tell you? What other questions do you have for me?
So, um, if you want to summarize where the money that you're, how much you're asking for, and where would that money go?
Yep.
So that'll be in the last two pages. It's a slide deck. As her new treasurer and the guy who spent half his day working on the slide deck.
If you want to come forward to the microphone.
Sorry.
Hi, I'm Dave Tocky, 72 Lemmonster Road, current treasurer as of last night.
Success!
Boys and Girls Club, thank you, Dave.
Did you say Lemmonster Road?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you lived near the center of town.
Yeah.
You're right, yeah, no, 72 Lemmonster.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you guys for knocking it down. I appreciate it. I've got 300 feet of budding property that no longer looks at that school. We'll talk about landscaping later. So, the biggest issue, where we're looking at really the most impact is our after-school program, because it's nine out of the 12 months out of the year. I'm talking, I said I wouldn't.
Then, no, I want you to.
And, Boys and Girls Club, is very near and dear to me. I volunteered for Boys and Girls Club, because I was, I benefited from the club when I was a kid. My mom was a single mom, raising three of us. And when you have two boys and one girl, the two boys are just the worst. But Boys and Girls Club really supported us during those years, so I've been volunteering for the last two and a half years or so with Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg. They're almost 100% donor and grant-based, as far as our funding goes. We do get support from, from the town. We really appreciate that, covering utilities, maintenance, other, other issues. But the, the money that we collect from our memberships really doesn't cover all of our programs that we do currently, what we'd love to do. So we do look at other charities, donations, crazy things. Oh, we got to have one more bake sale. All the little fundraising events that Michelle and her team come up with are literally amazing. So we're looking for really kind of helping to support that, the after-school program specifically, nine months out of the year. And it'll help us add some additional program selections, which is on the last page, or second to last page. Of course, the last page is a lot of thank yous, a bunch of pictures of little kids to tug at your hearts a little bit. Hopefully, you'll recognize one or two of them. I put a lot in the slide deck. But those are really what we're looking for, is, is support for that. As you'll see, I was very honest with our numbers. We had a shortfall this year, about 32,000 in the after-school program. Overall, our budget is going to look at about a 13,000% deficit, which we cover year over year. The good people of Lunenburg support the Boys and Girls Club, so we're asking for that support as well.
All right. Do we have any questions from the board?
I think, I'm just sorry, I'm slow.
It's okay.
Can you just walk me through the, the table a little bit? I think I, the $80,000 for payroll, that's 40,000 this year, next year?
Correct.
So it's two years?
Correct.
What are you thinking beyond two years? How do you keep that going?
That's a really great question, and that's a question we've been asking for 17 years, so I can confidently say we'll have an answer. I don't have it tonight. That's the truth, right? I think coming out of this pandemic, we've worked really hard to expand our donor base. We're working really hard with other local agencies. We're working on some other grant opportunities and some collaborations, which I think could pan out to something fantastic. The tricky thing with grants, like with this, is everyone says, what are you going to do when this is over? And there's not always a plan. That's the truth, you know? This would give us some time to work on that and to figure out what we need to do next. And it would protect some of the money that we've saved over the last few years, you know, by living on that shoestring budget. And so, you know, our hope is that this will help us reestablish what we need to do for the next couple of years.
So this is for new headcount, new position, or?
There are a couple of new part-time positions, as well as additional costs related to initiating some of the new programs that we're looking at.
Okay. And then it's 10,000 for the material supplies and 10,000 for administrative, so that adds up to the 100 total, is that right?
So there's some revised numbers that are in the deck that you guys received today, because the...
The numbers are, are the numbers different?
They're a little smaller.
Okay.
They're a little smaller based on our costs.
Can you fold it up? Maybe, I don't know.
So Michelle had...
Or just run us through the numbers maybe?
Yeah, it was just, it was a little small, you don't have it on the thing.
Because they didn't, no.
She had Memorial Day weekend to put together this stuff.
Email me, I can...
Did you email them?
I didn't. I thought you did.
I thought you did.
I should have. Sorry.
Sorry. It's a great slide deck. You should see it.
I hope there's animation.
No, that was Dave. That's his thing.
There would be no slide deck without either of them. That's the truth. I don't know how to use PowerPoint. So, that's, but we can send you that. I can forward that to you guys.
Okay.
My apologies.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'm just, Dave Blatt, 411 Goodrich, one of the board members. Just wanted to emphasize that we looked at this, and we looked at this as just, you know, what we were doing as outreach. What we really needed, we didn't really look at like the envelope of the Boys and Girls Club, you know? We look at that as, you know, as a town building. We kind of look at that more as the town and what they can be doing. But there are definitely some things that, you know, need to be taken care of at, at the club, you know, that we would, that would, if there was any, any available, would be definitely necessary. You know, we have some issues today that will become, well, we have some problems today that will become issues very shortly, that really need to be addressed, not the, not the least of the poison ivy or other different things that are going on there. But remember, we have in the order of, you know, 100 kids a day?
Yeah.
100 kids a day coming there. You can't watch every single one of them as they go to pull a vine to be nice, that they're not pulling the wrong vine, and things like that. But, you know, that we hope that the town is going to do anyhow, was the maintenance. We looked at this as really what we did for the kids, and that's what we always look at, is what we're doing for the kids.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. So my question was going to be similar to Selectwoman Imke's. I'm also concerned about, you know, funding payroll with like a temporary funding, and I believe that's something the school department has had issues with, with ESER funds. But I don't really see that as a reason to not support a request like this. So I just want to clarify about the payroll again. So most of this will be for new staffing to support the additional programs that you want to start?
So this year, we actually took on extra staff. And so we will be having those, that same level of staffing in the coming years, and those staff will be running additional programming. So we'll probably have more extended hours. They'll need time for training for some of these programs. They'll need time for certifications for some of them. So, yeah.
Okay.
I got to pay the people.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, not to belabor, but I will anyway. Yes, that was my main concern as well. You know, it's not like a tangible, it's probably not a deal killer, as far as I'm concerned, but it's not like, you know, you're buying a refrigerator, or, you know, where it's like a more permanent thing.
We thank the Green Committee for our refrigerator.
I'm especially sensitive to, to issues precisely like this, though, because I'm on the board of a private school, and every once in a while, we'll get, you know, somebody will give 300K to increase teacher salaries, and, and I'm like, wow, that's really great. Damn you. What do we do in year four?
Yes, so currently, all of my staff are paid minimum wage, so we can just start there. Like, we don't, we don't make a lot of money. Maybe a couple, maybe two. There's about 13 of us total. And so we'd, we'd really like to invest in our staff. They're willing to come to trainings. They're willing to be certified in things. And they're willing to stay with us year after year, which, you know, for 19 to 23-year-old kids speaks a lot to they love what they do. Andy and Adam are running another 10K. They will run any race for the Boys and Girls Club. So my staff find ways to raise money to pay themselves, which is phenomenal, and it's great, and it brings in more people and more donors. And we, we have very rare opportunities where we can ask for operating support. Most grants want very specific project support. And I really didn't know what to do with this request, because I got it on voting day. So I was a little bit, you know, a little bit behind the eight ball. But I think that our program is absolutely worth investing in. I think our program serves more families in this community than we imagine, and it will serve more in the, in the next year as we start to increase. We're going to increase some family support, some outreach, some support groups, some retreats for, for not just the kids, but for the families, grandparents, raising their grandchildren. These were all things that we had started to put into practice just before COVID, and then flatlined. So the need is greater than ever, and if you would invest in the people that run these programs, that would be phenomenal.
Quick, one final question, and thank you. This sounds like the kind of thing to me, as in from my own personal calculus, as we're, as we're going along, that if there were some sort of fractional funding, I mean, that's still a lot better than not.
100%. I, I thought I would shoot for the moon. I, I didn't know I could ask for that much. But this felt big, so I felt like, let's shoot for the moon. And if we land in the clouds, that's a great place to be, because that's what we need. We need to keep moving forward and doing more for the kids and the families.
Thank you. That helps to think about.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You have my full support for your full request.
Thank you.
This guy's giving out $17 million.
Say no to a whole lot.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, and I'll send along the updated slides with good pictures.
All right, thank you so much, Michelle.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
So, for us, that concludes our request tonight, but I do want to engage in some discussion here on these requests and our general ARPA footing. So, as a reminder, if we go into our Google Drive for this topic, we go into our Google Drive, and we go into, where is that? Very bottom, prioritize ARPA projects. I think that's the most recent list, and I know Selectwoman Imke had requested for us to update this, and I apologize that we didn't get to that in the, in the week. So what we're looking at, as a reminder, is let's look at priority project options number two. And this is kind of the amount of funding. So I, what I've done here is a little bit of quick math. We know that we have additional requests on this list above and beyond what remains. So we just heard the 750 roughly thousand-dollar request from the, from the library. We have the $50,000 from the, $50,000 from the food pantry, and $100,000 for the Boys and Girls Club. And I think we have a couple of those up here already. No?
I think the food pantry, that revised one was between 15 and 20.
Say again?
Between 15 and 20 for the food pantry.
From, down from 5-0. All right, I want to say it was a $50,000 ask, just, just for round numbers. So, what I'd like to implore the board about is, you know, we've, we've heard all the requests that have come before us. What we've done so far, and this is really to Selectwoman Imke and Nizzolo, we've done so far is we've come up with all the requests that have come before us, we've prioritized a list, and that's how we've landed with where we are now. So are, is there anything that we've gotten additional information on that we are not interested in moving forward on? So any of these pri- Um, so any of these projects that we've heard that work, that we have, that we're not interested in discussing further? So I'll walk through them. Public access.
It's a lot lower now, too.
It is.
Yeah.
Uh, a little, not a lot, but a little lower. Um, but public access, mental health clinician, sewer request was in two parts and it was a total of five hundred thousand. We only, the board only pushed forward the request for the manholes. Athletic fields, um, sidewalks, water district request, Marshall Park at this point has received funding. There is an additional request out there. I think, uh, the board's inclination is to pause on additional funding for that product till we sort through other things. We've already awarded funding for the consult related to us doing this. We have the fifty thousand for, from the, um, Business Improvement Fund, uh, food pantry. And then there's two items up here that sit on us, that we have not allocated any funds for, which is the municipal building design committee is gonna need some funding, uh, in, in the range of about two hundred thousand dollars. And then the Flat Hill Drainage Project's gonna need some funding, and we don't know what that's gonna cost. So if we were to move forward, and again, the town received three point four million dollars. Um, you know, I have not been, I, 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 we, I'm vocalizing an opinion here and saying that I, I do not feel the greatest about the million dollars just about that we allocated for vehicles that haven't been ordered, uh, or the half of them. So do we have any update on the two trucks for like four hundred thousand? Have they been ordered yet?
I reported on this at a previous meeting that the director was putting an IFB together.
Okay. No, I, I'm, I, I think that, so my, I'm aware that there were some struggles ordering the equipment. Um, my comment is to my fellow board members, uh, that I, you know, that's the only thing that I probably feel a little fuzzy about, is, is that money. I don't, I think at the time, it was, you know, we made that decision. Uh, I'm not looking for us to go back on that decision, but that's, that's the one project that I think we really need to keep an eye on to make sure that that's moving forward. That's a lot of money. Um, and if it doesn't happen, obviously, there's a huge negative impact. So I'm not, to the town manager, speaking poorly about it, but I'm just noting that for me, that's the one project, uh, that we've allocated money so far on that, that we really gotta see some progress, uh, and it seems to be out of our control. My comment then is that of this money, which, which based on the legislative language is clearly intended to be community-oriented, that if we were to allocate, um, the full request that comes from PAC, from the schools, from the Business Improvement Fund, from the pantry and the Boys and Girls Club, assuming that those numbers were at what they were requested before the meeting, that would be three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars roughly, roughly ten percent. And, and for me, that's like my starting position, is I, I do think that for me, those organizations should be fully funded. And I think what we need to wrestle through is the sewers' request, the water's request, and the library's request.
I'd agree with that.
But I wanted to kind of gauge everyone else's thoughts.
I'm not in favor of the, the regional BIF.
Okay.
Certainly not without some more discussion with everybody.
Um, I appreciate that, the way you just characterized that. However, my, my mental state be, just before that, and, and maybe still, is that for me on these, it's not a question of if on any of them, it's a question of dollar amount.
Yeah.
And, uh, now the, the regional, just if I could speak on that for a minute. I was, um, my, I didn't mean for my tone last week to be, to convey in any way that I was against it. I was simply cross-examining and putting him, putting him through the paces. However, I've subsequently had some, but I was skeptical. I certainly, um, you know, about the idea of, will we ever see that money back? And I've since had a couple of conversations, and I'm hoping that this, Renee, will help you inform your, and, you know, maybe your mindset a little bit too. Uh, I've had a couple of conversations since then, and especially serving on economic development. And, you know, it's sort of, are we ever gonna see fifty thousand dollars back on a ledger somewhere? Probably not. But by, by funding that, it's, we do, uh, we make a statement that we support regional business and, uh, in sort of maybe indirect or, or oblique ways, uh, there, there's a benefit that does come back to the community. So a business opens in Lemonster, for example, that some of that money went to. Uh, maybe that employs people from Lunenburg. Maybe it provides things that residents of Lunenburg can go, um, you know, avail themselves of. So I kind of took off my parochial, uh, or, uh, glasses a little bit and, and had my mind opened up to a little bit. Well, let me, let's think about this a little more holistically. So I've warmed up to the idea, thawed out, let's put it that way. Uh, so, but, but I, I don't know totally where I am with it, but I'm, I'm certainly more receptive to it than I, than I certainly, than I came off last week, so.
Yep.
Uh, so it's not a definite no for me, but it's, um, it might, is that an all or nothing thing? I mean, can we contribute something less than fifty thousand dollars to that, or?
Of course.
Okay.
Yep. Um, you know, I, I think BIFs have proven success. I understand your, your reservations. You know, something I was thinking about was, you know, even tonight, we had dinner, we ordered pizza from Air. Um, you know, where do we go for Chinese food? Mostly to Westford, uh, to go to Karma. You know, we think about a lot of the kids that work and get their first jobs, a lot of them, it's at Market Basket on John Fitch or Market Basket in Lemonster. Um, you know, if, if we wanna, for the most part, you know, where do we buy our clothes at? Um, I know a lot of it's online, but certainly it's not in Lunenburg. So I think that we do rely upon of the surrounding communities. You know, one of the conversational points that I've had with Fitchburg City Council recently, and then also with the, um, with Representative Kuschmeric, is about that economic development in the region and how Fitchburg is focusing on trying to, you know, invest more in their businesses. And my ongoing complaint to them is that they need to look at the roads that connect Lunenburg to Fitchburg and that the roads aren't drivable. That, you know, that if they improve the roads, that our residents would have a better likelihood of going into Fitchburg. But if you look at the services that are offered in Fitchburg and Lemonster, I do think that we're, it's a critical part of the region. And so that's, you know, and, and, and BIFs luckily have been around for a while, and so there's a proven record of their success. And so I understand your reservations, um, Selectwoman Mkey. I would be happy to kind of, uh, provide you some resources that indicate that these, how successful these things tend to be and, and impacting regions. But we can kind of push that to the side, so it sounds as if, um, but are, are we all generally in agreement that we're looking at funding these things? All right.
I mean--
Um, we're not seeing how much today.
Okay. Cause I thi, I think some of them definitely I would want more discussion on, and there's some we haven't heard at all. Haven't heard anything about the, uh, what's not on here? Is the police?
That's been withdrawn for the--
Oh, it's been withdrawn?
--mental health clinician, yes.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Because they will be looking to go to town meeting in the fall for opioid settlement.
Yep.
The mental health clinician.
Okay.
So it's gonna use opioid civilization funds.
That's, that's seventy-five new.
Yeah. Um, and the sidewalks, I know--
We had a presentation--
Are they coming back? There wasn't, the, the meeting I saw, uh, Carol Archimbo was here, but there was a student you worked with who was gonna come and present more detail?
The student decided not to present more detail.
Okay, so we're not getting any more detail on the sidewalks?
No.
Is that? Okay.
I did wanna know-- So I did wanna know if and when we're gonna get more information for the Flat Hill Road drainage project?
Yeah, that's for us to discuss.
Yeah.
Um, so, well, let's talk about it a little later in the agenda, unless you wanna hit it now?
Uh, I could comment on it now, but, uh, cause my reservations too. It's clearly a massive problem, there's no question about that.
Yep.
But i, is there, like, where, I, I guess we have to discuss, like, what is the next step? Like, there's nothing concrete as far as moving toward a solution to it, so I don't know how we fund that, you know, at least to my mind, so.
All right. And then, um, is there any, uh, when it comes to, I wanna say, the sewer department's request, I'm not in favor of the sewer department's request. Um, that's, that's the only thing that we still have in our list that I'm not in support of. And, and I know I'm saying this before we're allocating money, so that means that, you know, there's gonna be a bunch of lobbyists, uh, reaching out to all the members of the board to advocate against, you know, the position. But my thoughts on this are that, you know, um, enterprise commissions, for the most part, I think will need infusions of cash from time to time. Um, but what I heard from the sewer commissioners, that presentation was that they have two point two million dollars that they, um, this is very much so an operational cost, it's something that should be handled, uh, in my opinion, by their operational needs. I know that they have not increased rates, uh, for a little bit, but I think that a rate increase will likely offset some of their concerns. And then they did not, and then they also indicated that they have about seven hundred and fifty to one point five million dollars in potential projects, but that the bulk of the money was kind of in reserve, uh, related to pumpings, which can get quite costly, uh, and there needs to be quite a bit of money allocated for that. Um, I'm just, you know, my only opinion is, is in the scheme of things, I think it's a great idea, uh, but knowing that we have one point one million dollars, and that's roughly, you know, almost twenty percent of the request, that I, uh, you know, less than that, uh, I, I'm, I'm not as much in favor of that. And only because I think that there's alternative funding that could provide for the need. Um, it could be funded through existing funds, it could be funded through, uh, changes in, in how they, um, how often they improve these. I think it could be funded alternatively, and they're not dealing with a, um, an unknown need. I mean, the need to upgrade sewer manholes is known. Uh, it's an ongoing maintenance concern, and if you have to accelerate that schedule, I don't think that in the presentation we heard, that it was demonstrated that there's a lack of alternative funding mechanisms. Whereas when we look at the other requests that have come before us, there, there really aren't alternative funding mechanisms, um, as clearly. And, and water district obviously is a separate conversation that I know some members are gonna have an issue with. So I, I think for sure that we're gonna have to talk about that one separately. But sewer's the only one that I'm, I'm really kind of not, not in favor of.
In its entirety?
In its entirety.
Okay.
Two hundred thousand manhole.
Yes. Yep. So I wanna kind of, uh, gauge how we're feeling on, on that request. Uh, do we wanna keep moving this forward in the process to keep talking about?
Yeah, that was on my, um, that one I had on my yes list, so.
I was a maybe on that one. Investments in sewer infrastructure is one of the four, um, qualified expense categories for ARPA funds. So, you know, it clearly is eligible for it, but if there is alternate funding available, then that's gonna make me question whether or not I support it.
And Lou, what are your kind of thoughts?
I find these arguments pretty compelling.
All right. So maybe we can kind of, I know someone from the sewer commission's watching, uh, so perhaps what we can get is, uh, just a little more detail on available funding, alternative funding, if not funded by this, how, how else they can get this money. Again, we've already decided that we've only pushed forward the two hundred thousand dollar request for sewer manholes. Uh, so really just isolating on that, so that way we can make an informed decision, uh, related to that. Are there any other products on this list that we're definitely knows to?
Not for me, no.
So this is, this list is up to date with the two things that came off, right?
Yeah, we'll have to revise--
I mean, the, the numbers aren't, but the items.
Well, I don't think it has--
It doesn't have the Boys and Girls--
Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, yeah.
Or the libraries, library on here?
Or the libraries.
Library isn't on here.
Everything else is on here.
Okay. So it sounds like for next steps, when we get into our next meeting, and this is what I was trying to gauge, we'll, we'll reach out to sewer to ask for those clarifying questions. Um, Selectwoman Mkey, uh, do you wanna just clarify your concerns with water so we can see if there's anything clear, or do you already kind of have your mind made up about where you're at?
The concern, I, what, uh, the process, have, have they done an RFP? Do they need to do an RFP for this work?
Um, I don't, I'm not entirely sure if they will. I'm not sure if they're already--
Cause they're a separate entity from the town, I don't know, some, you know, how the rules, there aren't rules, I don't know.
They, meaning water, or?
Water.
Well, they do have rules.
Do they have to submit an RFP for these pilots?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I would, yeah, they would follow procurement law.
I would hope so, cause I, it's not clear to me that an RFP was done. I'm just thinking, I, the conversations I've had with neighboring towns, um, who have done pilots and treatment facilities, it's possible that, one, it can be done faster, and two, it can be done cheaper. And I don't know if other options have been explored. Because one concern I have that actually isn't on this list is, I'd like to carve out some money to help, um, residents with private wells. Because I, I've started looking, looking into the private well situation a little bit, and so there are eighty-six towns in, or, yeah, I guess towns, whatever, cities in Massachusetts where sixty percent or more of the residents have private wells. And there's this list of eighty-six towns, and they are given access to, I don't know if it's free testing PFAS in their water, or, you know, they're given assistance. Well, Lunenburg's not on that list. So--
I think we'll have to look into the eligibility of ARPA funding for that. Uh, it's related to public water supply and private wells aren't public water supply.
But it falls, like, it's, it impacts a good number of residents in town. I mean, I think the private wells fall under Board of Health, correct? So--
Correct.
Some, some assistance, um, to help people with private wells to do testing and, and home remediation. I, I know there's filter systems and things, I don't know the cost, I haven't gotten that far. But I think that's a, that's a group that's been left out.
I think we can work, um, Selectwoman Mkey, on figuring out, uh, how and if we can use the language that's in the law to justify spinning it on that. There may be an opportunity, an avenue, so we can definitely, uh, I'll work on that and with the town manager. So that way, when we discuss this next, we can get an answer to that. Okay? Was there anything else that you wanted to offer up?
I actually had a question, I don't know, this is really specific. If Lancaster and Keating laws are currently treated for iron and manganese? No one here will probably know that, but it's just something that came up, cause I, that's, I've, I've learned the importance of that, cleaning that up before you deal with PFAS, because simply the manganese especially can clog. It just reduces the efficiency of PFAS cleanup and the lifetime of that.
They did mention that, but I, I think that the water district mentioned something about that.
They did, I don't know if it was--
I don't know if they're currently doing it, because if they're not currently doing it, that has to be built into the plan.
Yep.
And I think there are SRF funds available, um, possibly even for pilots now.
Yeah.
I found a document that does list pilots. So I think, you talk about, you know, alternative sources of, of funds, um, I think there, there may be some opportunities there.
Okay. So it sounds like, what, you know, I think we have to be a little careful, um, with the requests that come forward of, of, of considering the requests that are in front of us. Uh, there may be other considerations or concerns with the water district that we're not gonna be able to address. Um, and I, you know, think that we're gonna have to push some of that stuff to the side, uh, to consider the request that, that is actually in front of us. Um, and, and so are there any clarifying questions that you'd like to get from the water district?
The RFP is a big one.
So whether or not they need to RFP?
If they have done it.
Okay.
Um, and I mean--
I, I do know that they can't RFP yet for a project that they don't have funding for. It's not a good faith RFP. Uh, and, and at that point, it's not an RFP anyway. You're, that's just an RFQ, in which you're trying to kind of do some research and something.
I mean, basically, you know, quotes that, it's, there's not enough detail in here, like, to know exactly what they're doing and, um--
Time, I would offer, Select, I'm gonna, I rely heavily upon the professionals that they've enlisted support from, time bond. I'm not second guessing the professional that they've asked.
I don't know that they've done a lot of PFAS remediation. Iron and manganese, yes, and a lot of other engineering projects, but I, my, my sense perception is that they're relatively new to the PFAS game.
So, so to be clear, are you generally opposed to supporting any money for the water district? Or is there a pathway for you to support something? Cause that's what I think I'm trying to engage--
There could be a path to support a portion.
Okay. And a portion being a hundred thousand portion being--
I don't know, I can't give them that much.
Okay. So there's a pathway to support a portion of the funding request, but you're not in favor of, uh, is it fair to say?
Blindly, right now, yeah, I don't, I, um, yeah.
Okay. What, what I'm trying to gauge, as you can probably tell--
A little too vague for my comfort line.
--is opposition or not. Is, is if it's a no, then it's a no, and, and then we put it, you know, to the side. Is anyone else kind of in that same mindset as Selectwoman Mkey? And in terms of needing to get any clarifications on anything that to, and to help get a pathway to approval?
I'm generally supportive of it, I don't know if I support the entire request. Um, there are parts of it, like maybe the public education, um, and the master plan part that I was still kind of iffy on. So I'm still sort of mulling those aspects of it over, but there's nothing in particular, uh, information-wise that I need--
Okay.
--to make my decision.
Um, I also like the RFP, RFI questions, drilling down on that. And also, uh, yes, to what extent have alternative sources of funding been, those avenues been exhausted? Um, you know, I would, I think I wanna hear more on that. And I mean, if that's a question of bringing them back here again, then, then so be it, and we'll, we'll think of more questions, too. Uh, my mindset is, um, uh, you know, again, I think about how large-- My mindset is, you know, again, I think about how large the pie is we have to divide up. I don't see doing 485, but I really don't see doing zero either. So for me, on this one, it's a question of amount, but I also wanna see justification, and also that other avenues have been exhausted.
Yep. Okay.
Can I ask something about Flat Hill? Is, is it possible to have, you know, some kind of consultant or engineering, some kind of evaluation done? Would that be a, under ARPA?
We, we already, turn the town manager, we already have a engineering consultant working on this project.
Working now, it's not done, right?
It's been ongoing. It's been something that we've funded over the last couple of years.
Is there an update on that?
There was an update on that. If you wanna watch that meeting, it's kind of a long.
Which one is it long?
It was from April, I believe.
I'm just trying to come up with, we can get some, something behind a number that we can put in here.
There's no number at this time for that, based on what we were given as an update at that time. There's still exploratory work to be done as far as looking, working with property owners along Flat Hill Road to determine if there is an outsource for that water as one option. So there would be eventually work needed for survey work and drainage calculation work. So, but at this time, there's no number. It's too preliminary for that.
Okay. And then on the to-do list, is there to learn more about what we can do to help private well owners?
Yep.
Can I just add a comment on that?
Of course.
When we first started, when we first learned of getting ARPA money.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things I asked the board to consider in the town is that we wouldn't add programs that would add a lot of additional work for staff. That could potentially lead to administrative portion of disseminating money to private property owners for all funds. So that would be my, one concern really.
The consultant for reporting? Would that, the consultant for reporting that's been funded?
We are required to do that.
Yeah, so they couldn't do this as well?
Administer a whole program for?
No, just, I don't.
Yeah, so that type of program would be.
Some sort of assistance, I don't know.
Similar to what, there's programs that the state has done for septic repair, private rehab programs. So there's a lot of administrative work to be done with those types of programs, cause there's a review of eligibility, dissemination of the funds, you know, the whole accounting of those. So that's my reservation of that.
And, and I, and again, you know, the federal funds come with strings attached. You know, there are certain things that we can spend money on for clear personal benefits, such as we can pay for funerals for people who died from COVID. But governments always have an issue where you're spending money that betters private property. And although, you know, certainly water and drinking fresh and clean water is a issue.
This is a health and safety, yeah.
It certainly is. However, the equipment is on people's personal property.
But even testing, to help them assist in testing of the water.
Yeah. So, so the point, my point in saying this is that I think it's just, we have to get clarification. I, I see it a pretty immediate conflict with us allocating taxpayer money that betters individuals' properties regardless of the reason, but that ultimately betters people's property. And so I think we just need to look into that to see if these funds can be used for that purpose.
I'm just gonna put this out there. I don't know how helpful it is, but there is currently a state law being considered that would establish a regulatory, a regulatory code for private wells, and there's also some testing requirements that would be done by the DEP as well.
All right.
That I don't know the details of, but.
So it sounds like where, where we're gonna be at for our next discussion on ARPA is that we have a couple of questions, but ultimately, the board seems pretty able to go straightforward with allocating some funds, for the most part, with several of the requests that are before us. Is that a fair summary? Yes, yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. All right. Let's go into our interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations. This is, we're gonna start with the select board's annual appointments. So if you go into our Google Drive for tonight's meeting, and let me just get back over to it. And we go into our appointments, and we're gonna start with the select board appointments. Till the very end is the select board appointment list, and this lists all of the people requesting appointment. So, the best way to, I wanna pull out the American with disabilities, actually, let's not pull it out, to the town manager. The town manager is proposing for us to ratify her appointment of Lori Ann Tessier for a term to expire 2000, June 30th, 2026. This is the one area that's a ratification, that's not just a straight appointment by the board. And then we will get to those other, the town managers', other appointments that we need to ratify momentarily. So the easiest, quickest way to do this is we're gonna run through these. Any board, if any member is aware of any board in which you have a concern, if you wanna identify it now, if not, I will make the very long motion of reading through all of this. And before we go, I see we have a member, someone with us tonight that I don't recognize. Are you here to discuss, Cola?
No.
No?
Parking at Sunset Lane.
Parking at Sunset Lane, got it. So, all right, we'll get, we'll make sure we get to that quickly. All right. So, select board annual appointments. All right, I'm gonna, if we don't have any concerns, I'm gonna make the motion going down to every single list. We're just gonna read the whole thing. Sound like a fair process? All right. I move to appoint to the agricultural commission Jennifer Duffy to a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Ashley York to the agricultural commission for a term, as an associate, for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Lori Ann Tessier to the American with Disabilities Committee to ratify the appointment of Lori Ann Tessier to the American with Disabilities Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. To Nathan Lockwood, the Architectural Preservation District for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. To the Conservation Commission, we'll come back, Conservation, to the Council of Aging, Diane Naud, George Martin, Helen Balcomb to a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Dave Passios to the Green Communities Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Jennifer Sanderson and Kevin Bussem to the Historical Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Steve Walker, Steve Arshinbo, Paul Sarapis to PAC for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Susan Andrews to the Personnel Committee to a term to expire June 30th, 2026. And Steve Dubois for the, to the ZBA Associate for a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. All are appointed. We need to come back. We, we already appointed Dr. Chandler last week to the Cultural Council, and what remains is discussion on the Conservation Commission. We heard from Mr. Welch last week that he was interested in an associate position. Is the board comfortable with appointing then Richard Birch and Chris St. Germain to the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. It is customary that we don't appoint associates to the council, to the Conservation Commission. That's decided by the Conservation Commission.
I will just point out that we did all, I did ask Mr. St. Germain whether he, you know, they're willing to do an associate. So, but really, both of them have said they would do that.
Okay.
So I don't know if we wanna drill down on which one of those goes to the associate and which one goes to full, but, I mean, there's no, there's no controversy as far as I'm concerned, as far as Richard Birch goes.
Okay. Yeah, are we all in line on Richard Birch?
Yes.
Okay. Chris St. Germain, I think certainly both applicants came very well prepared. You know, I'm gonna defer a bit here to Mr. Bob Pease, based on his experience and him meeting with the candidates, and, and Bob's, you know, review, he recommended Sam Welch for the associate role and for Chris St. Germain for the full position. So I'm gonna defer to Mr. Pease.
I'm comfortable with that.
Comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right. I move to appoint Richard Birch and Chris St. Germain to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes.
I, could I also just clarify something procedurally?
Yes.
And, you know, something came up in an email, and I just wanna be absolutely clear that just because we indicated that certain people wouldn't, certain incumbents, for example, wouldn't need to appear before us, didn't mean that they were automatically appoint, reappointed. It just meant that we didn't need for them to come before us to present a case for reappointment.
Correct.
But that they were still welcome to do so. I just wanna get that out there so that there is no confusion, that the fact that we didn't have them in here or asked them to come in doesn't mean that the appointment, reappointment is automatic.
Correct. And I think our policy makes it clear. No appointments are automatic. If anything, our changes equalize their reappointment and appointment process more than it ever has.
Yep.
To the town manager's appointments. So the town manager is proposing for the board to ratify several appointments. We've already taken care of the appointment for the American with Disabilities Committee. So I just wanna walk through all of these. So I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Kathy Cuomo as animal control officer, as Brian Gingras as the building commissioner, Eric Chartrand as the alternate building commissioner, Ronald Wilson as the dam keeper, Rich Patry as the assistant dam keeper, Patrick Sullivan as the emergency management director and fire chief, Ralph Swick as the races control officer, Brian LeBlanc as the assistant races control officer, Janine Swick as a member of the racist team, Kathy Cuomo as a field driver, Patrick Sullivan as the forest warden, Heather Lemieux as the hazardous waste coordinator, Heather Lemieux as the hearings officer, Gary Williams as the inspector of plumbing and gas, Richard Kipnis as the assistant inspector of plumbing and gas, the following public waiters, Rich Reynolds, Aaron Morin, Brian Cantoy, Jay Valier, Mike Reynolds, Jen Olivera, John DiNapoli, to Steve Cullinan as the inspector of weights and measures, to John Byrie as the inspector of wires, to Baron Bowser as the assistant wiring inspector, to Tom Alonso, Lou Franco, Mike Kidney, Chuck Venezia, and William Tyler as the clock winders for a term to expire June 30th, 2022, to William Bernard as the tree warden. That was a motion.
So, some corrections on date, June 30th, 2022, it said there.
Yep. June 30th, correct on that one, June 30th, 2023. These are one-year appointments.
So that's in a few weeks.
Should be 2024.
2024.
There you go, yeah.
What year are we in?
Uh.
All right. With that correction, is there a second so we can just discuss this and make mod?
Seconds.
Well, there might not be a second yet. Well, only because I think there's somebody missing from this list. If, unless, I, unless George Martin, I thought he put in for the clocks again.
I will have to check with Elaine, cause she has all the.
Okay, so can we just do what we have here and then add him, and then do him separately later?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Okay.
Are we?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I do not anticipate that we have a conflict to Mr. Franco with being able to vote on this clockwinder. I think your conflict is.
For the sake of formality, I will abstain from this vote.
Are you being serious? Are you being serious?
Yeah, why, I mean, if, as long as I think, as long as I can get three votes.
I think you can get three votes. Do we have any other questions, comments on this? All right, we have a motion in a second. As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Oh, wait a minute. No, 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 I'm gonna make a mess if I abstain. Okay, so, cause we're doing the motion overall. Aye, all right?
All right, we have, I, just, let's do that vote again. As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Any abstentions, the motion passes.
Yeah, yeah, cause I forgot it was for the whole bulk thing. I, I don't wanna make a mess of that, so.
All right. And then the last areas to ratify, and this is regarding the town manager's appointments, we have also the list for Townsend to the town manager. We're gonna get that in the next.
I'll have to check on that.
All right. So, it is our policy that we typically appoint Townsend's police officers as well as our own, and, and that gives us the ability to have Townsend in force and the boundaries of Lunenburg, and then also if there's ever any situation that requires a large public safety response, that it, in partnership with Townsend, they provide it to us, we also provide it to them. But that's not before us tonight. What's before us tonight is just reappointing all of our members of the, of the police department on the full-time reserve and civilian side. All right. Any questions on this before we go ahead and read it? Okay. I move to reappoint to the Lunberg Police Department as full-time officers, Chief Gamel, let me go first names, Chief Thomas Gamel, Lieutenant Jeffrey Thibodeau, Sergeant Sean Connery, Sergeant Josh Tossi, Sergeant Sean Zerate, Sergeant John Murray Alley, Officer Joshua Matthew, Officer Jonathan Brock, Officer Bradley McNamara, Officer Jacob LaChance, Officer John Wagner, Officer Gage Russell, Officer Cameron Monroe, Officer Anthony Capucci, Officer Jeffrey Hill, Officer Jesse Reed, Officer Devin O'Brien, Officer Paul Theodoulou, Officer George E. Tibbetts, and as reserve officers, Officer Robert DeCosta, Officer Benjamin Campbell, Officer Paul Duquette, Officer Joel Ortega, and as civilian traffic members, Paul Bosikas, Tony Brennan, John Hazelrigg, Daniel Bourgeois, Aaron Robashad, and Andrew Fields. Do we have two Daniel Bourgeois's?
Mm-hmm.
We'll say two Daniel Bourgeois's.
Yes.
And then Andrew Fields. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any additional discussion related to this motion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right, the motion passes. The officers are reappointed. All right. To the town manager, I think that that takes care of all of our appointments and reappointments, with the exception of a question related to the clock winders. All right, let's go ahead and go to our discussion on parking along Sunset Lane in Robbs Hill, since this was brought up. Since we have a, a member with us tonight, or a resident with us tonight, who's been here for two hours waiting for this discussion. All right. So we did invite, to set the stage for the board, I did invite our traffic officer, Officer Jacob LaChance to join us tonight. Jacob was coming off of a double, and so we, I did reschedule this to next week. However, I feel pretty confident that the board is able to consider the information we have in front of us and make a decision as far as what actions are needed to come forward. So to explain to the public, there was a, I will present in the traffic survey, that was, that was conducted. The, we received a request related to Sunset Lane and Robbs Hill. Specifically, the request was for us to put no parking signs to the north and south side of the intersection with Sunset Lane and Robbs Hill. The resident noted, a long-term resident complained, and I think complaint is an appropriate word to use, that the resident complained that, that there are cars speeding down the road, that it's becoming unsafe, and that there are plans to subdivide some property in this area that would further exacerbate the issue. I provided the initial response to the resident, indicating that because there are property interests in the area and no parking signs would negatively impact several property owners, that we needed to first look into this to identify, you know, what the, you know, what was, to identify the traffic patterns. In response, the police department set up a traffic monitor, again, to the north and south side of the intersection from May the 1st through May the 12th. What it tracked was 5,175 vehicles over this time period. What it identified was that the average speed was 20 miles an hour to 23.5 miles an hour, that there was one vehicle recorded traveling more than 10 miles above the speed limit, many vehicles recorded of traveling about 10 miles an hour. The 85th percentile of speed was still below the speed limit, and that highest speed was 28.5. I believe it was 28.5. So what we identified then from the traffic survey was that the overwhelming majority of vehicles that traverse this area are traveling below the speed limit, seven to 10 miles below the speed limit, that there's not incidents of many people going above it, and then the history of accidents in the area indicated that over the last 15 years, there have been two accidents in or around the area of this intersection, which is consistently very low for intersections generally in the town. So I wanna stop and go to the resident to see if there's any questions that you may have or comments that you wanna offer during this time.
Sure. My name is Marsha Beers, and I've lived in Lunenburg pretty much my whole life. I am a member of the Lake Shirley community, and I also own the property or. I am a member of the Lake Shirley community, and I also own the property, or an owner of the property on the corner of Sunset Lane and Robbs Hill, that very corner, and then also I have, we have a parcel across the street that's on the shoreline. We've heard of complaints when we're there during the summertime or on the weekends, we park along the side of the street, not in the road, we're on the bank-in, as far up as we can get. There is, we do see people that kind of speed by. When, if our car is there, and then there's like, I think, six parcels on the shoreline there, three are used, the other three, not so much. But when we're all there on a beautiful day like Sunday, we had two cars, and there were two cars next to us. We had some friends over, but we asked them to park across the street on our other properties, so it's not a problem. But what I've noticed is that when we are parked there, if there are cars coming down Robbs Hill and people coming up Sunset, the people coming up Sunset are gonna move to the left a little bit, and if people come down that Robbs Hill corner and they don't slow down, there is that potential there. I mean, I've never seen it, but I know that there's been complaints from people of us parking there. People beep as they drive by like the whole time because we're parked there. I really don't see the problem with us parking there because we're not in the road, it's just, I do see that potential of coming down that hill. And I don't know if a solution would be maybe to put a stop sign at the end of Robbs Hill because that would stop the people on that side and give it a little more time. That's really all I want to say, is that, you know, we're gonna abide by whatever the town wants us to do. We've also offered to our neighbors that are down there, if they have extra cars or more people, they're welcome to park across the street at our lot, if that helps solve anything.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
That's very helpful. Any, any questions? No?
No, nothing.
All right.
Okay, thank you so much.
It was identified during the drive-bys with the police as well that there was no concern about when vehicles were parked on the side of the road, there was no concern about the passability of emergency vehicles, ambulances, fire trucks, et cetera. So what's before us tonight is, you know, we're responding to a request from a resident. Do we fill it with the information that we've received? And I know that we've all, just the public is aware, we've all gotten this via email. Are there any at this point, do we think that there's any other action to take here related to this request? Is there anything else to consider?
I don't think so. I thought the initial request was maybe not withdrawn, but certainly-
I think the-
The concern level went down after the traffic report, right?
I, I, I think that the, the resident indicated that with the traffic survey and then the, my reference that there were residents who would be impacted, that, that I think they perceived or received that the likelihood of the board moving in a direction that was favorable was minimal.
Yeah, so I trust the traffic survey that was done. Doesn't look like anything really needs to be done. I think that resident in the response email basically agreed with it and also said that, you know, the concern here is mostly a potential concern, so I don't really think we need to do much about this.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with everything that's been said so far.
Okay. I will still forward a request to the traffic officer and to the Police Department to inquire about whether a stop sign would be beneficial in that area in their professional opinion. The select board's responsible for deciding if we're gonna put any new ones up, but I will solicit opinion from them, but pending that response, I don't believe there's an action for the board to take. And it sounds like we are all in agreement, we don't need a motion or a vote, so the board is taking no action on this request.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we're gonna go now to discussion and vote on Chapter 268. I'm gonna come back to the town manager's report. We're gonna go to a discussion and vote on Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022 related to a 5% local COLA option for the Worcester County Regional retirees. I did indicate to Worcester County that I did not think that a presentation this evening was going to be necessary, but we can quickly just present what this request is. I want to turn to the town manager, if you wouldn't mind, just giving us the brief summary of what's being asked of us today, and then I can certainly add additional information from my conversations with him as well.
Sure. So in November of 2022, we were notified by the PERAC, which is the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, that the governor signed into law Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022, which provided for an additional cost of living adjustment for retirement boards to act on. So our local retirement board, Worcester County Retirement, had previously voted under the sectional law that allows them to vote every year on the cost of living adjustment, which was a 3% adjustment. This change in law allowed for an additional 2% added to that 3%, so up to 5%, which they did vote on to ask all the member communities, and it, but it requires a 2/3 approval vote of those communities. So what you have in your Google Drive is we reviewed with the other communities what their votes are currently, and some have responded, some have not, so it, it's a split as of now. You can look at the results.
It's under the June 13th meeting.
Yeah.
Documents related to WRR.
WRR COLA vote results.
Right, now which particular document is it?
Oh, I'm in the other folder, I see.
Is it the PERAC?
It's not in the COLA folder.
No, it's not, it's down here. This one.
Oh, all right.
Now, now I'm missing out on where this thing is.
So it's right in the June 13th meeting folder, not under COLA.
Yeah, Eileen added it at the end of the day, so it didn't get added to the, because she was still getting calls.
So right now, there are 2/3 yes. They have, so, as, I don't wanna-
10 have voted no, 19 have voted yes so far. We've received responses from 34 out of the 49, but some of those responses are not yet determined, a vote hasn't been taken, so.
Yep. So with-
Also, I want to add the cost impact projection, there is a worksheet in there that I put together based on the formula that was provided to member communities, how to do a cost, cost projection. I would say that this, I'm leery of these numbers, just because, so Year 1 is a known entity because it's based on what we have for actual unfunded liability amounts for that year. So those numbers are known, but going forward, those numbers are unknown based on retiree amounts. So I would say this is at minimum the cost impact for those future years, but I would still, you know, take those numbers as not the maximum impact.
They did a 4% increase for the future years, right?
For future years, 4%, but that 4% is based on that first differential.
And there's no immediate cost impact in fiscal year 24, 25?
It doesn't hit until 26, fiscal 26, but it's retroactive to July 1st, 2022 for their fiscal 23 cost of living adjustment.
So as a reminder, this does not include teachers, this only includes our municipal employees who are part of the system.
There are some school employees included in our Worcester County Retirement.
Yes, but no teachers, that is just some administrative personnel.
The PAR is another related administration.
All right. What questions, if any, do we have related to this? So our requirement is that we need to vote on this by June 30th, if no vote is considered a no.
So I have a question, is it 5% or can it be the 2% or the 3%? Are those options, or is it just 5 or nothing, or?
It's the, we're vote, the board is voting on the additional 2%. The 3% is baked in already.
Okay, right, okay.
And, but you don't have the option of saying no, 1%.
No, 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 yeah, 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 but so it's, 3 is already in, it's really a question of the additional 2.
Additional 2.
Okay.
Right. Any questions or positions?
Certainly not position, Jed, I'm still letting this swirl around, so.
I usually don't like to go first, but I'll happily offer my position on this if the board would like.
Nah.
I guess I'll offer one. I mean, I'm supportive of it, you know, I think it's an increase of 2%. You know, I, I think it's fairly straightforward and something that I definitely support, so.
You know, I think when we talk about supporting seniors, you know, this to me is a tangible, concrete way to do so. You know, most of the people who are retired are seniors in our community, you know, not many people can afford to retire before they are seniors. So this is, this has a neg, a direct positive impact on seniors, so that's one area that, you know, makes me naturally more inclined to want to support it. The other thing is just the hyperinflation that we've been in, and knowing that many people who are on a fixed income are already, you know, living with lower amounts than those of us who are working every day, and so the impact then of hyperinflation on people who are on a fixed income, it's more extreme. You know, could, it has any, if any of us look at our own budgets, I mean, has, has your own budget been able to stay the same and only go up by 2% over the last couple of years? Absolutely not. And if it has stayed the same, it's because you had to make cuts somewhere else. So, you know, we've all are living through these hyperinflationary times, you know, I do believe that we need to focus heavily, which we'll talk about next meeting, we need to focus heavily on revenue, we can always think of a thousand ways a government can spend money, but, you know, taking care of our retirees, many, many of which are people who didn't retire and making the amount of money that employees can make today, but they're kind of making do with those retirement benefits in today's dollars. So for me, this is a, a clear yes, and I fully support the request. And again, the impact here is we have to join with other communities. Our yes does not mean that our employees will get this money if the remaining communities vote no. And right now, it looks like it's a 2/3, slight 2/3 majority voting yes, so it's just on So, does the board feel as if we need to weigh this more, we need to revisit this next week, or does the board feel as if we can make a commitment? I guess I did have my-
Why are some towns not voting on it?
Say again?
Why are, why are some cities not voting on it? One-
They're deciding not, not to vote on it at all.
Interesting. Okay.
You mean, they, they just, they haven't just not voted yet, they're just not voting on it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, there's one not, Phillipsden is not voting on it.
Okay. I, I, I would appreciate the benefit of an additional, I mean, we've got the time, right? So like, we just have to do it before the 30th, I just want this to swirl around a little bit more.
Okay.
All right.
All right, I will defer to that, we'll put it on next week's agenda, and we'll revisit it then. If, in the meantime, there's any question that anyone has, we do have a local person that we can provide some contact information to, who's more than willing to answer any questions that we have.
I mean, I don't mean to be a parsimonious old skinflint, but I just want to think about it.
A parsimonious.
Parsimonious.
I don't even know what that word means.
Cheap. Cheap in the purse strings.
Got it. All right, so I just want to make sure, because again, you know, we are in this era of being lobbied, is there any general opposition to the request? Or is it just we need to understand more individually?
Yeah, I don't have opposition yet, I don't have, I don't have anything yet, I just want to digest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. Excellent. All right. Mr. Blatt's still here, so I'm guessing you have a public comment or something you want to say.
Sure, I'll further add, yes.
I thought he just had no place better to be.
I just figured I'd hang out to give you an audience. Dave Blatt, 411 Goodrich Street. First of all, I wanted to introduce myself to the, to the new members, many of you have seen me before, but I am actually the Chair of the Green Committee, okay, Green Group, Green Team, whatever you want to call us, but, you know, our job is to basically save this town money, okay? To get funds, to save the money. So today, I wanted to come and just, what I heard today is I heard, you know, we had folks coming in for the ARPA funds, and I've also seen the capital plan funds with the school wanting things. I encourage you as the board, you've appointed us, the Green Team, the Green Committee, the Green, whatever you want to call us, to help you guys save money, to help get these things done the right way, to help get it done so that they're actually gonna last more than 15 years. If I changed my furnace every 15 years in my house, I would be an idiot, okay? But the fact of the matter is, is that's, that's the kind of thing, and I don't want to get into things. But I encourage you, I encourage the Finance Committee, I encourage the Capital Committee, to force these people to come to us, to talk to us, to present to us, because what we need from them is very simple, we need to understand ROI, what's the return on investment? What can they do? Is there an energy savings? Is this thing falling apart? Is this thing, but there are funds that the state's gonna give us. We've gotten $500,000 plus from the state already in the years that you've guys have let us do things. And by the way, most of that has gone to the schools because the gentleman that was running the schools was that active with us, and it was easy. We look for talent things to do. We've given money to the library to actually fix their system a while ago, and it's kind of, I'm upset that they're not still here, but I was disappointed they're not still here, but the fact of the matter is, when we saw the system, they were using it incorrectly. They were actually hurting the system and things like that. So there's trainings available, there's things available to these people, and we encourage you to, I, I can't use the word force, but you, we encourage you to make sure that they have approached the Green Committee about things about this, this thing. I look at it as that $300,000, there are ways that the Green Committee can, can help with that, that will be an energy savings. I look at the generator, that is a, not the proper way to go this, this to me would be solar system with battery backup, because that would be something that would have a quick ROI. A diesel generator is just gonna be a money sink to this town every year because there's maintenance on that, there's a monthly maintenance, this, this ridiculous amount that you're spending on a generator that's gonna get used at most, what, five days a year? For, we're gonna be nice and say five days a year, but this is just what I'm gonna say. I say that you have appointed us, use us. You haven't used us well in the past, we've seen many projects that have come through and that, you know, that people have said, oh, we need this, and we're like, why didn't you talk to us? And then it was like, oh, it's too late. You know, these, these little things like this. So we need, we need your support more than anything, and anything right now. We are dying for programs to help this town. We are running out because we're just a bunch of citizens. We don't have access to the buildings, we don't have access to be able to do the different audits that they need, the town officials have, you know, they have, the town and school places have these things, sewer commission, variable speed drives, there is money for that if they want it, if they want to do things. Like I said, you know, I looked at the library, there's money for the heat system, the HVAC system, there's money towards other things. We have the funds, it's available, the state wants to give it to us, we just need to have the projects to present to them. And that's, I'm gonna get off my soapbox.
Before you go anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Go ahead.
You know, Lou's gonna say something, but I think it would be helpful for you to review the requests we've already had come in.
Sure.
Before we make any more decisions here, or decisions that are the obvious ones that we can do.
Okay, I didn't get a chance to see all of them, but I've heard, heard some of them, you know, that's about it.
That's exactly where I was gonna go, yes, please, thank you for coming up and saying this, too. Yeah, if you could go through the list of requests and identify at least where you think you might be able to get alternative funding.
Sure, happy, happy to quickly review, I mean, you know, at any time, I'm happy to quickly review, I can, I can have it ready for you, you know, I mean, we can go through partially tonight if you want it, but if not, I can have it for you, you know, I have, we meet on Thursday night, so if you have a list, we can go, I can go through with the, with the group on Thursday and present, have it to your back before the weekend.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Okay.
Yeah, just to the extent that we can reduce the, the load on the ARPA requests.
Correct.
We may be able to do more, more, you know, more, it's more leverage.
Right, right. And, and it's, to us, it's almost the things that nobody thinks about, as the idea is, we're helping with funding, we help get funds for the hy, the police cars, you know, going hybrid enabled us, enabled us to get state funds to help pay for them and offset the cost of going hybrid on them. So I look at this as a positive for all on that, on this thing, and, you know, I know we have too much solar energy now, but the fact of the matter is we're gonna find more ways to kind of save in this town, you know? And yes, we did kind of look for your projects, but I'm having a tough time with the solar cap on the, on the, on the, on the old dump, yeah. It's just, I, it's, it's the cover that nobody wants to touch.
Yeah.
Type of thing.
All right, we'll figure that out.
We'll figure something out there.
Because we have to figure it out, there's a lot of this untapped money.
I understand that, and there's, but I look at the, also that I got town buildings that have nothing on top of them, too.
I know, that's a lot of roof space.
That could be untapped money, too, and your roof lasts, lasts longer if you have solar panels on it than if you don't, so, yeah.
And just to remind the new members, what he's making reference to is solar panels in the old town dump, that they've been trying to work with me on.
Yeah, no problem. We're, we have plenty of projects to work with, yeah. So, welcome, guys. And like I say, feel free, if you want, we get together every once in a while, but come on down. We, very relaxed group, and always happy for people to say hello.
Are your meetings on Zoom?
Actually, no, the meeting's not on Zoom, unfortunately. I could, I should probably start again. It's only, when I can get the right room in the library, we're on Zoom. If not, it's tough, but, you know, that's, that's all right. Couldn't get the right room this time in the community center. It's tough to do the Zoom with somebody's PC sitting there, so, you know.
Maybe that needs to be the next thing, is making sure that the library is fully accessible for Zoom meetings, because we do have two meeting rooms over there.
Well, the other one would be just getting like an owl or something. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but Owl is this conference room thing that spins to catch, you know? And, I mean, granted, it's a lot of fun when three people talk at once and it's going.
Yeah, it's like a Polycom.
Yes, exactly. Well, originally Owl, but then Owl Town Board.
That's what we use at the Ritter.
Excuse me?
That's what we use at the Ritter and the DPW, the Owl.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, it works well.
Yeah.
Oh, you still have one? You have one? We have one?
That's what we use for our hybrid meetings now at both DPW and Ritter.
Oh!
Yep, in the basement.
See, we didn't know these things. Oh, there is one?
All right, Dave.
All right, thanks, guys. I appreciate it. Great job. I always appreciate the time you guys put into this thing. And I guess I was happy that we had an audience for you today, you know, for one.
Thank you, Dave.
Any final questions?
Yeah, I just want to say one final comment. I mean, you said at some point here that you need our support. I think we need your support. I think we need each other's support.
Correct.
A constant line of communication would be great. It's, I'm just so happy for your comment.
Correct. And we're excited because we're going to get our bids for the streetlights and that, finally get that, that one done, checked off the list. So, we're ready for the next one. We got it. We need projects for October? Yeah. We need projects for October. So I encourage, we're going to thankfully meet with the, the town facilities person, hoping that the school facilities person manages to show, come. I didn't get confirmation yet, but we need to explain to them and let them know that these, the funds are available for these projects. No, I think for the school, we probably could have gotten a good portion of that.
I don't know to what extent you're going to be able to quantify, but let's just make something up for a second. Quantify these things, but let's just say like that $300,000 HVAC request for the library. I mean, is that something where you could say, hey, we might be able to get 100 grand for that, so we know what we would need to do to make up the difference? I mean, you see what I'm getting at?
Actually, if I could show the proper, if we could show the proper ROI, the state has actually, would look, it's almost 100% funding.
Wow.
So that's, that's the whole thing. It's a matter of, you're only allowed a certain amount per period, so I think it's capping at 150K now. So I would say 150K out of the 300 could possibly in a project.
All right, so that turns that request from a $300,000 request to a $150,000 request, theoretically.
And by the way, I would look at things like that. If they go to the mini-split method, the state has, also has funding, because if you're going to, if you get, if you decommission your whole old system and go to the energy-efficient mini-splits, the state's giving money towards you as well. So there's funding available, it's just a matter of which way's the best way to do it. It's not the, it might not be the way that somebody wants, you know, originally would want to do it, but it could be the best energy-efficient way to do it. You know, instead of heating a whole space, do I now look at individual, smaller areas and utilize it as I need it? And I think that was the biggest issue that I, that we saw with the library, is things were being heated or cooled when nobody was around.
Yeah.
And it didn't make sense at all. And we're still trying to get some of the lights to go LED, but architecturally, they can't be, type of thing. So, and things like that.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. All right. Thanks, guys.
Any other remaining questions?
No.
Thank you. All right.
So we're coming to the end of our agenda here. So minutes, we're going to do minutes, warrants, and action items. I think we put the minutes on next week's agenda, if I'm correct.
Got to get that town manager report in there, too, right?
Oh, yeah, that's the best part of the meeting. Let's hit any warrants. No warrants tonight, because we signed them last week. We do have a correction, though, which is the business name on the auto, the Class II Auto Dealership License was incorrect, so there is a correction. And I'm just going to pass this down. If all the members can sign, this was something we voted on last week. And while we do that, any action items this evening? I think Ms. Imke, Selectman Imke, you had an action item for the town manager.
Did I?
Thought we texted, or you sent an email about it?
Oh, wait, that was done. The link for the kickoff meeting this Thursday was added to the town website.
Okay.
Yeah, that was done.
All right.
It's on, it's on the website now.
Excellent.
There was a survey, though, that goes with it, that actually we should make people aware of. Even if they don't go to the meeting, there is a survey. I think there was a QR code on the flyer. So, as long, just to make people aware, if they can't go to the meeting, they can still complete the survey and get feedback in that way.
And there's going to be multiple meetings as well. This isn't the only.
Yeah, this kickoff, that implies, you know?
Yeah.
Wait, I can't see what I'm signing.
Okay. Any other action items? All right, to the town manager's report.
For Boarding Committee and Commission vacancies, the, are, there are two vacancies on the Finance Committee. There is one associate vacancy on the Green Communities Committee, one member-at-large vacancy on the Open Space Committee, one vacancy on the Personnel Committee, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested in any of these positions can fill out a application form found on the town website and submit it to the Select Board's office. And if you have questions on these positions, you can contact our office at 978-582-4130, extension 144. For employment opportunities with the town, there are the current following, current following openings. The Assistant Town Accountant, which is 32 hours a week, the Facility Superintendent, which is 40 hours a week, Finance Director, which is 40 hours a week, Heavy Equipment Operator, which is 40 hours a week, Principal Assessor, which is 40 hours a week, Veteran Service Agent, which, the hours vary, and Videographer, which is roughly 2 to 10 hours a week. Information on these job opportunities can be found under Job Postings on the town website and how to apply. An update on Invitation for Bids, Requests for Proposals. Invitation for Bids for Guardrail Repair Services were due on May 31st, and the town received two bids. The lowest eligible responsible bidder was Premier Fence LLC out of Canton in the amount of $80,886. This will be paid out of the Mass DOT Winter Recovery Assistance Program, otherwise known as RAP, funding the town received this year. Invitation for Bids for the Page Street Culvert Replacement Project were due on June 7th, and the town received three bids. The lowest eligible responsible bidder was RA Powell Construction in the amount of $86,913.16. This project is funded through the Fiscal 23 Capital Plan Appropriation. Requests for Proposals for the five-year assessing reevaluation are due on June 14th at 9:00 AM. Invitation for Bids for the LED Streetlight Conversion and Maintenance Project are due on June 14th at 11:00 AM. And Invitation for Bids for the Operations and Maintenance of the Lunenburg Wastewater Collection Systems are due on June 14th at 12:00 PM. Invitation for Bids for the Roadway Maintenance for Fog Sealing are due on June 21st at 12:00 PM. And the Assistant Town Manager is currently reviewing documents for the Invitation for Bids for the Generator Project at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center and the two dump DPW trucks. So as you can see, the Assistant Town Manager has been very busy with bid projects, because that, each one of those project packages requires a review and back and forth between the department head that that project relates to, and I do the final review. Update on Fiscal 23 Tax Assessments. Municipal Finance Services has fulfilled their contract, and due to an additional 12 inspections needed, the total cost increased by 2,400 for a total cost of 82,400. As of May 30th, there, sorry, that should be as of this, as of today's date, I updated these numbers. As of today, there were 12 non-waterfront tax abatements approved with a tax refund amount of $21,410.39, and 359 waterfront tax abatements approved with a tax refund amount of $1,211,386. This does not include interest, that is, a separate calculation done by the tax collector. Approximately 30 abatement applications remain and will be reviewed by the assessors this week. Employee Highlights. After Memorial Day, I received multiple emails commending the appearance of the cemeteries. I want to publicly thank the Cemetery Superintendent Todd Holman and the two seasonal cemetery employees for their hard work in getting this done, especially given that there were eight burials the week prior to Memorial Day that Todd handled. Todd takes a lot of pride in the work done at the cemeteries, and I think it shows greatly. So thank you, Todd, and the two seasonal employees. I received an email from a resident about DPW Director Bill Bernard's responsiveness to their concerns about potholes and missing street signs on Mulpus Road. Bill always addresses issues promptly and thoroughly, so thank you, Bill. And as the Lincolns noted, everyone was awaiting the street painting, so I want to thank Bill for being persistent about that. He was consistently, every week, following up on that, and fortunately, eventually got done, so thank you. And just as an overall note of appreciation for all our staff, I note these, these two, because I received emails regarding these, the cemeteries and the Mulpus Road resident. But all of our employees, every day, work hard to fulfill all their responsibilities in the office, so they should all be commended for the work that's done for the town. So I thank all the employees and the department heads for making things happen. Town Facilities. The ADA Patio Project at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center began last Monday, and they're currently doing site work. There'll be a change order to reuse the septic sand that was still on-site and areas needed on-site, and export more of the clean material. This change order should be in the ballpark of 5,000 and will be paid out of the facilities budget. The HVAC system, speaking of the library, is currently not working properly in the children's section, and the Facilities Director is working on getting costs for a repair, which is estimated around $8,000. Unfortunately, right now, the parts needed for the repair have a 10- to 12-week lead time. In the meantime, the Facilities Director is looking at a portable unit for the children's section to keep that side of the building cool. The 30 School Street Project has begun, been hydro-seeded, and grass is starting to grow. 9/25 Mass Update. The contractor hired by the EPA is substantially complete. They took samples from each of the underground storage tanks, as well as from the fuel tank area. They currently have approximately 200 cubic yards of petroleum-impacted soil staged on-site and covered with poly-sheeting. This material will be removed off-site for treatment, as well as a few hundred gallons of residual sledge cleaning fluids stored in totes at the site. Once they get their generator ID from Mass DEP, they can move that material off-site. It has been about a month since they filed that request with Mass DEP. They reused some of the excavated material from the top and upper half of the sidewalls as backfill, since the readings were all within acceptable limits. There is a layer of poly-sheeting at the bottom of the underground storage tanks excavations, and then another layer on top of the reused backfill materials to segregate it from the clean imported backfill material. This should help segregate material down the road if future soil excavation is required. Joe McLaughlin of the Beta Group will be our licensed site professional handling reporting to DEP regarding the identified, identified soil contamination that was found during EPA's removal of the underground storage tanks, pumps, canopy, and piping. Beta will prepare the immediate response action plan that details completed and planned activities requested by Mass DEP and activities that have been performed by the EPA's contractor. On June 2nd, I submitted a grant application through Mass Development's One-Stop Application Portal for the Real Estate Technical Assistance Funding in the amount of $50,000. This request is to fund hired staff to work with the stakeholders in developing conceptual plans for the reuse of that property, a feasibility and marketing assessment, and technical assistance in the development of a Request for Proposals. I spent a significant amount of time on this application to make it as competitive as possible, included a number of photos, and also requested and received a letter of support from Representative Margaret Scarsdale. The award notice for this grant will be around the October, November timeframe this fall. And there's a picture, a most recent picture, that Facilities Director Chris Ruth took with his drone of the site. That's where it stands now.
All right. Any questions to the town manager related to the town manager's report?
No.
All right. Okay. Do we have any committee reports this evening? I would assume not, since we haven't even decided committees, too much.
I have just a little bit from the Council on Aging.
Okay.
So I just, I, the town manager already covered some of it with regard to the patio project, but I, just one question I had, and I don't think it was in the town manager's report. I think I heard today that the projection is that that'll be completed by the end, by September. Is that?
That's the timeframe.
Okay. That's, that's great. I did give a senior tax relief update, you know, just that the, that the email that you had forwarded, that the, the proposed legislation is officially filed with the House Clerk as of June 7th, the House of Representatives, and that there could be a hearing, but anytime between now and February. And what else do I have from there? Just in general, I just want to say, you know, just to the, to the public that, you know, to the Adult Activity Center, you know, it's 50 and over. Look into it, there are so many good programs there. They have people coming in and speaking. I believe the Historical Society has been coming once per month and doing talks, but there are also so many other programs, and it's just such a great resource to point you in the right direction for any need you may have. It's, I just want to platform that, that's all. Just ongoing platforming of that. And also with, actually, I don't think I need to worry about that one, because I spoke to him afterwards, so I'm good.
Okay. Any other committee reports? All right. So, to our new members, how are you guys doing? I know these meetings get a little lengthy, but how are you guys, how, how's it been so far these first couple of weeks?
Good. It's been good.
Good.
I know, that's like a random middle-of-the-meeting question. You know, one of the, one of our goals next week is to have a workshop, and, and really what I'm trying to do is, is really make sure that in your introduction to the board and to this role, that we're giving you all those decisions, so that way you can make an informed decision. I, I think that my role as Chair is, I don't have any more power or authority than any of us, but it certainly is to, I think this role is to maintain the traditions of town and the traditions of this board, but also to help educate our newest members, to help get you guys up to speed, so you feel comfortable with all the things that are going to come before us. So next meeting, we are going to have a workshop, and during that workshop, you know, the intent is to go, you know, we have separately that training, so we're not going to be touching upon the things that are at the training that's happening. I do encourage both of you to go. I will be there, too. But the workshops, as I mentioned last week, is really focused on some of the odd things that we do throughout the year, like the dog hearings, some of the requests, and just kind of going through the calendar, that we tend to follow a certain general calendar here. And so walking through all that stuff next week. And then, one of the things I'm going to suggest, and we're coming into that topic now, is in the past, we've created these goals, and the goals are board goals. This year, I'm proposing for us to create some ad hoc committees, in, you know, as part of our goals or in addition to the goals. And, you know, part of this is that I know that, you know, both of you ran on certain campaign issues that you wanted to kind of advance, one of them being, you know, energy for, as an example, I think both of you noted, looking into municipal aggregation or getting away from unitil. That's a process. You know, the board probably should not make a goal of taking over unitil without a lot more research, because that sends a very strong statement to our local utility company. And so that's like one of the areas where I think that we would be well-served by an ad hoc committee to kind of do that research, outline for us what this process would look like, kind of gauge that like, kind of gauge that community's support, things of that nature. I'm using that as an example because I think that both of you have more familiarity with that, but I think there's other areas as well that as a board, we may want to tackle, like, you know, solar panels that hold town dump, that, you know, we have been well-served at achieving our goals when we break off and form these kind of committees, I want to use senior tax relief as an example. Sometimes when we tackle things as a full board, it can be a little challenging to make progress in certain areas. So, next week, I will want to go into that in a lot more detail. Without Tom here, we're not going to be able to finalize our list, but I do want to, with that said, so next week, the goal is to walk through several of our processes, to talk through our goals and objectives that we have for the year, to talk through some of these ad hoc committee ideas. If you guys aren't in favor of it, certainly you can push back on it, but next week would be a good time to really walk through that. Certain decisions, even going into, you know, I'll mention it now, certain times, we defer to a full board. We don't like to make certain decisions with only, with some of us missing, and so kind of like, what is that fine line and walking through it. Getting used to the board, it's also getting used to how we communicate with each other, which is, I'm sure you're learning, it's one-on-one and that we cannot send group emails. So, it's also kind of talking through some of those things and it really, it's conversational. The gist is that it's about a ninety-minute workshop and that's what we should plan for, but for the most part, we've clearly agenda. It's a handful of, I think right now, we have about twenty minutes of appointments at the very beginning, but it should just be a workshop-focused meeting. And I have more work to do with Tom and with Lou. Why am I calling you Tom? Oh, yeah, Tom, Tom, yeah, with Tom and Lou getting ready for it. So, on our agenda tonight, we have our select board liaison and committee assignments. So, for the most part, most members have expressed in-
Just to let you know, I'm sorry. Just a couple of hands up.
Yep.
Okay.
We're not there yet.
Sorry.
So, next week, we, public comments is coming up, we're still about fifteen, ten minutes away from it. So, for select board liaisons and committee assignments, we do have, most of our assignments are in the drive, and I just want to kind of walk through based on the feedback we've received. Most of the existing members have expressed interest in keeping their committee assignments, so just want to walk through that. The American Disabilities Act, we just appointed Lori, confirmed, the town manager's appointed Lori. To that, Renee has also expressed interest in this one. To the town manager, how does that work?
There's a select board representative as well as a-
All right. So, Renee, you've expressed interest in the American Disabilities Act Commission Group. I think historically, they don't meet very frequently, it's a couple of meetings a year. Tom has expressed interest, while I'm assuming Tom wants to remain on capital planning. We have council of aging, Mr. Franco, I'm assuming Lou, that I already know you want to stay on that.
Yes.
Economic Development Committee, Lou, you're staying on that.
Yes.
Or you'd like to?
I'd like to, yes.
Finance Committee, right now, that's Mr. Alonso. Finance Committee Appointing Committee, that's also Mr. Alonso, I would like to be on that. So, I'll talk to Tom about that next week. The Appointing Committee. Library Trustees is I, I'm the liaison for them, I want to stay on that. We'll come back to some of the other ones we don't have filled. Open Space Ad Hoc, Lou is on that. We have kind of taken a pause, though, on open space. I've raised a lot of issues. Open Space has done a great thing with helping get property into conservation, really supporting that being a robust program. I've raised a lot of reservations about this board being willing to put any more property into conservation until we decide the future disposition of the property that we already have, that we need to reserve some of this land for future development, future schools, future police departments, future, whatever, we think the need's going to be in two hundred years. So, I know that for the most part, open space has kind of been a little inactive until the board catches up.
Yeah. I mean, I just want to say, like, I don't know, like, I, last year at this time, when I said, you know, I said I was not doing a good job on that last year, that I was going to do better this year, that didn't happen. All right? I did an absolutely horrible job again this year, so I just want to own that, and maybe I'm not the one that should be doing that because I clearly haven't done it. So, okay.
I don't know if I'm the best because I'm pretty oppositional right now until we get ahead on other game.
Maybe a set of fresh legs.
All right. So, we have that one open. Planning Board, Renee has expressed interest in Planning Board and Renee has expressed interest in the School Committee. You want to do both, Renee? That's a lot of time.
Yeah, I would prioritize School Committee.
Okay.
My own personal preference would be School Committee.
If you want to prioritize School Committee, then I would be willing to work with the Planning Board.
All right. So, my recommendations on how to liaise, develop a relationship with the chairs of each committee. It's going to become very challenging to sit through three or four-hour Planning Board meetings and School Committee meetings, and you should not feel at any time obligated to have to attend all of their meetings. It's good to have a presence, it's good to communicate with the chairs, and if you would like to go to a meeting, you know, certainly nothing's wrong with it, but I think that it's going to be very hard and become a lot of time. Also, as we liaise, we do have rules, and I believe in our handbook about it, we have to be careful to, we're there as a fly on the wall, so oftentimes, we are pulled into the conversation, but we want to, often wait for the invitation. So, that's just the best advice I can give is, is don't voluntarily offer much of any opinions unless you're explicitly asked, because even though in the room, it may come across as good, that a lot of times, it can come across as meddling, and so we have to just be careful not to meddle. We have had complaints in the past about select board liaising and getting too engaged, so just be careful of that. All right? But it is a really great way to improve communications with boards and committees and to provide some synergy between what we do and what these committees do. We've identified in years past kind of which boards we're going to liaise with. If you guys think that there's more that we need to add to this list, we certainly can add them, but, you know, we kind of prioritized a bit based on a variety of things. All right. I'm Municipal Building Design, I want to remain there unless there's any objections to that. Senior Tax Relief Group is no more, and then Lou and I, I know want to remain on the high school civics classes.
Let me just comment on the Senior Tax Relief Group. I mean, there could be some follow-ups, things that need to be done there potentially with the legislative delegation, so I don't know that we should consider that totally dissolved at this point.
Okay, we'll keep it open.
And I would like to remain doing that and see that through, but it sounds like it's going to go almost on autopilot from this point forward, but, you know, I still think there should be some placeholder people.
Okay. All right. Master Planning Committee, this is something we need to decide who's going to sit on. My preference would be for this to be one of the senior members of the board, so not for it to be Caesar, you, or Renee, that would be my preference. For the Master Planning Committee, certainly, it could be anyone, but that would be my preference. I think there's a lot, there's a lot of back knowledge that I think is going to help you be effective in this role, and I know with both of you being newly elected, that there's, you know, you're drinking right now through a fire hose, and I don't know if this is going to be a very helpful appointment at all. So, I'll leave that for Lou and Tom and I to discuss next week unless you guys really want to jump on this, but I'll leave that for-
I mean, I'm not really a rookie, but I don't know if I'm experiencing that for that yet either.
That's going to be quite the commitment.
Yes.
Quite the commitment. I wanted to also, in our drive, we have information about MART, MPO, MJTC, and MRPC. I want to kind of give you the rundown. I can't get involved with MART because they're one of, they're a tenant and they're also purchasing property right now through Mass Development, and I'm directly involved in those deals, and so I'm fully separate from MART right now. So, for the most part, MART, MPO, MJTC, and MRPC, they're regional organizations, you're going to be meeting with many people from multiple communities if you sign up for these. So, MPO is the regional planning organization, they're like the big dogs, so to speak. That's when you're getting a lot of the state money coming in to fund certain projects. An example of the projects, and we can probably think through some of the MPO money, but MPO did the bridge near Mackey's, right? Was that MPO?
That was a state project, I don't know if that was a tip.
Okay.
Project.
They're also right now doing the, let's see, the intersection, if you drive down Route seventy to one seventeen in Lancaster, that intersection, that's one of the products that they're funding, that intersection. MPO gets the big dollars, they have the biggest money. They plan about ten years out and their solid planning is closer to like six. So, a lot of what you're doing is prioritizing plans for the region that improve, you know, really transportation, a variety of stuff. So, that's what MPO does. MPO also meets during the day, they meet at like one in the afternoon or something like that. MJTC and I believe MRPC both meet at night, they're about forty-five minutes to an hour-long meeting, they're also a regional meeting. We have a seat on these boards, but it's mostly, we don't say much, we don't communicate much, it's mostly getting updates from different entities and kind of being informed. Again, our MJTC is focused on transportation, MRPC is kind of like MPO, but a little more focused in our specific neighborhood. You guys can read up on both of these. I think that we have a hard time keeping membership on any of these three because most of the money is supporting the region, it's not always products for our town. The town manager, DPW director, they also submit projects that kind of get into the flow, so really, what we can do on these boards, the most important one is MPO, and what we can do is prioritize and force some of this funding, kind of get the noise out there. I know when I served on MPO, I was pretty big on the bike path, walking path that goes from Pittsburgh to Lemonster, and really trying to get that off the ground and get over the hurdles, and it was really pushy on some of the vendors there. So, you will have the opportunity to have a voice in some of these regional issues, but for the most part, it is a wholly separate commitment from the general work of the board, and we do struggle to keep people on them. So, I do recommend as new members.
One thing I don't think you touched on was how often they meet?
Once a month.
Once a month, okay.
Yep. Once a month.
And just physically, where are these meetings?
Yeah, so, a lot of them are in Zoom, but, so if you know, I've been on all four of them. And so, where they're at is, what's the name of the street? It's in Lemonster, but it's near kind of, if you're coming out of like Buffalo Wild Wings, the plaza there, and you're driving and you get to that, so coming out of that plaza going into like downtown Lemonster, and you get to that first set of lights.
Mary Maeve?
I think that may be it. You get that first set of lights, and if you were to keep going straight, you're going straight into downtown Lemonster. If instead, and this is the Kmart Plaza, Buffalo Long's Plaza, if instead you take that left, as if you're going down towards the back end of Michael's and-
Okay, that's Lindell Ave.
Lindell Ave.
Yeah.
If you take that left, it's about a quarter mile, not even, on your left-hand side. So-
Oh, yeah.
And it's property owned by Friends of the Reservation, I believe is what it's called.
Abbottav? So, is it four sixty-four Abbottav, Lemonster?
That sounds right. Yep. So, all right.
Are we deciding on this one tonight?
No.
Okay.
I'm just encouraging you to look into these.
Are they remote, you know?
You can participate remotely, yes.
Well, I know the MPO is, because of the time, that's, yeah, no go for me.
I don't think I've been highly effective on any of them, I don't think that most people are, I think it's mostly a reporting-type deal. MPO meets the longest, their meetings are about an hour twenty minutes. MART usually meets for about forty, thirty. MJTC, MRPC, it all depends on the topic, but they're usually about an hour.
Yeah, the MPO's one o'clock.
Yep, one o'clock. Okay.
Good.
Yep. Nope. That's why, I liked MPO, but that's why I can't do it.
Yeah.
All right. Please think about it, I encourage you to, like I said, I've served on all of them, it's usually something that goes to junior people, because by the time you've been in them for a year, you don't want to do them anymore. So, it's typically the crap that usually goes to junior members, but it's a good learning opportunity to learn the region, make some good connections with people.
So, for these purposes, I'm really not that junior. I'm kind of on the cusp.
Caesar, so I have you down for Planning Board, but you got to take more than one thing, my friend.
I know. I'm definitely considering some of these and schedule-wise, I can attend, especially if it's remote, meetings at one PM, so I was considering going down for, I mean, like you said, we're not deciding on it today and I don't know what other people are interested in, but I would be willing to do these.
Okay. And then, perfect.
When you say these, do you mean the entire slate?
I, maybe.
MJTC and MRPC get a bit repetitive, to be honest.
Yeah. It might make sense, I don't know.
All right. Okay. And then, Master Planning Committee, we'll talk about that, we said, next week, because I'm a little light here this year, so it looks like I'm going to be stuck with-
You're still on Municipal Design, you're right there, that makes you not light.
Yeah, but I'm a little light on the assignments. All right. Okay. We're going to go into public comments. Any other things, any other, before we get into public comments, anything else that any member of the board wants to bring up? Nope? All right. So, a couple of open items, again, for our next meeting, we are going to be looking to vote on the funds for the, I do see people with their hands raised, we're looking to vote on the funds related to the cost of living option for Worcester County. It sounds as if the board does not need any new information, you just need time to review the information you already, that's been provided to us. All right. Any public comments this evening from the town manager?
None.
Any public comments from the public? We're going to start with Peggy on Zoom. Ms. Stewart?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for finally getting it on the agenda. I was the one that brought this to the town's attention back in March, I wrote a letter to Chairman Jeffries as well as the town manager, advising them of this two percent. The town was unaware of it, even though they had gotten a letter from Worcester County Retirement. I do have a lot of information, I would have been there this evening had I known that you didn't have more information to decide on. The money, the two percent, that additional COLA has already been given by law to all of the town's teachers. They got it many months ago and have probably already spent it. We are just asking for you to be considerate and fair with the municipal employees that have worked on the town side all of these years. This is a one-time unprecedented additional two percent, and it's only on the first thirteen thousand of your, of our retirement. It's not on the total of everyone's retirement benefit, only the first thirteen thousand. Many don't even have that much in retirement pension because they worked part-time jobs and their pensions are considerably lower than that. The, I echo what Chairman Jeffries said, it's a hard time out there for retirees on fixed income. I watched the town pass help for its residents for real estate taxes, for, they had to go through the state, but they passed a new law for that. Please help us with this two percent. It's not anything that's going to be assessed this year, I'm going to read you, it has already been approved by the local government, there's no additional appropriation to the local government or a new cost for this year. The Social Security COLA for this year was five point nine percent, eight point seven and five point nine in twenty twenty-two. We don't get that, we get our pensions because we didn't pay into Social Security. So, this modest benefit is going to help us keep pace with inflation, and I urge you to vote yes. This is, many of the towns and cities haven't voted because they are like lunar- This is, many of the towns and cities haven't voted because they are like Lunenburg and probably many of them don't know about it because that second reminder did not go out from Worcester Regional Retirement, which is supposed to have gone out. So I, I beg of you to do this, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. To Ms. Lockwood.
Hello, this is Anna Lockwood, 91 Main Street.
And to the booth, real quick, can you just turn up the volume in the room a little bit?
Is it just me?
No. Thank you, Ms. Lockwood.
Sorry.
It's not you, we were having, we're just having difficulty hearing.
Okay. Well, I, I, I'm on vacation, but guess what I've done in the past three hours? Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. I watched the, the ARPA presentations tonight and I appreciate those, as I said before, we should have the same standards that you have had for us, for the Parks Commission, where we answered some pretty hard questions and we have had to have evidence, I think the word that was requested from us was evidence to how the money was going to be used and what was needed, the money. And, and regarding the Flat Hill problem that we have now, that's a big problem. We, and as the town manager talked about earlier, we don't have a way, we don't have a plan for that yet. And because this is not my field, how, how much work that is into creating some of these plans, engineering plans and solving all of this and asking the right questions. You know, I go back into asking this, and questioning if this plan, if the fat, flat hill problem should, should be considered at all for ARPA funds. So I know Select Board member, Emneke, mentioned, you know, can we put a number on the money right now for some part of this project? And I think while you can do that, you cannot answer another question that was asked from us, which was how far would the money take this project? So if you tell me, hey, we can get $500,000 onto the planning for this project, you cannot tell me that, what does that mean for the success, for this project to be successful? And that's a hard question to answer. And I think that's one that we need to answer, you know? And all these other projects, you know, if we give money for the, for freezers and coolers for the, for the food bank, how far would that get us? So that's a really fair question to ask and that's a question that I had to answer. And, and I think, and I thought it was a fair question. So aside from can we put a money on it, how far would that money ask us, take us? So please, you know, don't lose sight of that. Another comment that I have also about ARPA, it was regarding the private wells. I just want to do, you know, I'm not a townie, but I am, I've been in town for almost 20 years now and I am thinking a little bit about history. About 20 years ago, the town stepped in and brought water, I believe it brought water and sewer to a community that is looking right across the entrance to Calder Reservation and they were at a, at the point of almost, almost their house being condemned because either they didn't have water or sewer. I was, I, I believe I had barely moved into town, wasn't aware of all the details. But at the time, the town stepped in and worked and actually became, I believe, we had a court-appointed person for that and the town stepped in and borrowed money and borrowed money unto the benefit of those residents. And that, that's how we were able to improve those private properties in a way that didn't affect all the other residents. So there was, all the works, and I'm sure Mr. Alonso was actually on the Select Board at that point, he was part of that project, and Karis Fidel was our former, former town manager. But, you know, improving, using this ARPA money for private, for the improvement of private properties, I have a problem with that because I think, you know, we got to go back to, you know, what this board had talked from the beginning, which was let's use this money for real improvements for everyone, for the entire town. And I do think, you know, the private wells and, and all the concerns we have with community that we're forever, chemicals, they can be addressed, but there is more than just one way to, we can do that in different ways. And the way we did it with our communities, one that we shouldn't look back, learn from how we did something really well and do it again. So that's my comment tonight and I'll see you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood.
Can I just take my comment now?
Yes.
Just to respond to previous speaker about the town being aware of the Worcester County Retirement, the town was aware. We did receive correspondence from both Parac and Worcester County Retirement on this, at least on three different occasions. And it was scheduling of that vote at a Select Board meeting. As everyone's aware, our agendas have been taken over this year by the tax assessment issue, so it has been a challenging year for other meeting scheduling. And I think what the last speaker was speaking about was Meadowwoods. If I'm unfearing, it is hard to hear in here right now, but that was a project that due to septic issues at Meadowwoods, the town did work with USDA to get funding for that, which they were paying, we had to take out the debt and they were paying back those loans. But that, I'll reserve comments tonight because it's 10:20 on that. It ended up working out in the end, but after many, many years of them being in arrears and payment, uh, payment plans with them, that it finally came to fruition.
Yeah, and that was due to them selling.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, and the new buyers.
Right.
And that's having a lien, I think, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or something along those lines of them having to get rid of it.
Right.
Yeah, there was a lot more to, to getting underneath that. It's not a good case study of the town intervening successfully.
No.
But I do understand the comment that was made.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right. So, thank you to the town manager. Have any public comments this evening from the board?
Just to clarify, 6:30 next week?
6:30.
Okay.
Yep. Any other public comments from the board? All right, I will offer.
I'm sorry, I just want to say that it wasn't either speaker because I've heard Anna speak before over this thing. I had a very difficult time hearing. I think I got the gist of both. I am going to have to listen to these on TV or, or stream them to know what they fully said, but I will do that.
Yeah, it was a little low in the room tonight. Any other public comments from the board? So, you know, again, I want to just express to the, to our newest members, you know, what, what helps us be successful is working as a team, you know, small group dynamics. So, you know, one, one of the things that's always very helpful is, you know, there's going to be meetings where you're going to leave, you're upset. We need to have a good enough relationship with one another that you're comfortable and feel confident that you can call each other up, myself included. If something rubs you the wrong way, if something's said incorrectly, if something is offensive, that, you know, certainly we can spill over in public, but I strongly advise that we work with each other to iron out any tensions that, that exist along the way. Or if we find those things that are working really well with one another, that we give each other that personal feedback. You know, we are more effective, I think this board has become incredibly effective over these last couple of years. And, and what's been the most helpful, I think, has been the dialogue. You know, Tom and I can talk about anything, even when we don't agree. I know I can talk to Tom about most of anything. And, and, and that's really what's helpful is when you have a member and you, and you really work on that personal relationship, it does allow us to be a lot more effective in this role. I know this is preaching to the choir, both of you have experience working on boards and committees, but I just want to offer that as you guys get more acquainted into the role, please just be sure to engage, interact and really work on your relationship with your fellow members, including each other. All right. Any other comments this evening from anyone? All right, I do try to target 9:30 for these meetings. I have not been very good, I know that the last meeting was longer. We're going to be in a long cycle for a couple of meetings, okay? Hopefully by the time we get through about mid-July, we should be in a more healthy pattern, but we are going to be, these are going to be long meetings at first and then we'll settle down. Are there any upcoming meetings where we know members will not be available or will not attend?
Not in the immediate future for me.
Okay, between now and the end of the summer is what I'm saying, between now and the end of August. Is there anything?
We'll be vacation at some point. I don't know when.
All right, I know I'm out August 8th.
I'll have annual training in August.
Okay.
But I don't have the exact dates right now.
Okay, so Mr. Franco, I'm out August 8th, it's my anniversary.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so you'll be putting in the, the backup QB that day?
Yep, yep. So that's all you that day.
I, okay, sorry, when you're done commenting.
No, I'm done.
I just want to say too, that I think I totally agree with you in terms of the personal relationships on the board. And I also think that one way to foster that is finding things that you can work on with another board member. And I already know just from what Select Board member Emke has expressed, you know, in her, when she was running, one thing that was important was getting more people involved and, and sort of involved in government. And, you know, I have always said, you know, I've said this since the beginning, I think that every seat should be, at every level should be challenged every time. I think that that's something that we could totally work on together, getting more people to get, come out and run for these offices. And I feel a little bit more liberated to say that this year, since it's going to be my seat at risk, I want people to run. And I don't think anybody should go unchallenged. Period. So.
Thank you, and I agree. I don't have any more elections ahead of me. So this is, I appreciate the honor of being chair, but I am not seeking it next year. And so, you know, I know for me, this is the, you know, end of my service, so I definitely want to do the most I can do over these next two years before I go back to Fort Couch.
You'll find something else to do, I'm sure.
I will. So if there are things, you know, next week, so next week we're going to talk about goals, ad hoc committees. What would be helpful between now and then is really just kind of think through a lot of the things that you think that we as a board can agree to. I mentioned one thing about Unitil as an example, that where I will be resistant is, is we have to be careful about the unintended messages we send with our goals. And, and while I fully support us getting away from Unitil, I do not support us creating a goal of doing that until we have a lot more information. Because that sends a message, a very strong message. And I think Unitil is, is, we should expect that, that that's not going to, that becomes a tension, a tense relationship with the business in, in our community and our utility. And if we're going to go that road, we need to do so with eyes wide open. But again, I'm not opposed to it, I just want to make sure we do a lot of research. But when it comes to our goals, that stuff, as you think about what we can do, try to also think through the unintended consequences of any of these goals that we may come up with, of what we can work through. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The time is now 10:26, the Select Board is adjourned. To all those at home, we will be coming back next week, 7:00 PM. Again, the Select Board will go into executive session at 6:30, but we will have our regular meeting at 7:00 PM and next week is a workshop for the board. We have a limited agenda and we will be, again, meeting on the floor. For all those who may be taking off some time, we wish you the best and look forward to seeing you same place, same time next week. Have a good night.